Hey Sean, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, let's just do a little testing, good.
Absolutely.
The video, can you see me okay? Sean, can you see me?
Oh yeah, yeah, I can see you.
Video is great, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, can everyone hear me? Some thumbs up, I can be heard.
We're here.
Good evening, everybody, and again, thank you for, which should be the final meeting of this month. So I would like to call to order tonight's meeting of the Old Bridge New Jersey Planning Board, again, for tonight, December 15th. And if it all rises and salute the flag.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
The United States.
United States of America.
To the Republic.
To the Republic. Which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible. Liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all of the nation. Okay, thank you, everybody. Vina, can we have roll call?
Adequate notice of this meeting of the Old Bridge Township Planning Board has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. At least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of the meeting by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting. Mailing such announcement to the Home News and Tribune and filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk. Mr. De Palma, he will be, he's running late and he will join us shortly. Mr. Renna.
Mr. Lauer.
Tell me if you can call my name.
I see Mr. Renna is present.
Yes, Mr. Renna is here.
Mr. Lauer.
Yes, here.
I don't, I don't see Mr. Lauer.
I don't see him either. Mr. Lauer, you on video?
Mr. Mamacas. Ms. Cannon.
Here.
Mr. Schmitz.
Here.
Mr. Lanning.
Here.
Mr. Pink. I see Mr. Pink.
Yeah, I see him.
Chairman Marucci.
Here.
Mr. Petty. I don't see him. Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Garcia notified me that he would not be appearing tonight.
Okay, so we have six board members at this time. Mr. Sardello.
Here.
Mr. Darji.
Present.
Mr. Kalyo Kilani.
Here.
Mr. Lavallo.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Southland Township Planner, I'm here. Mr. Medser.
Dino, this is Brian Prosska.
Mr. Prosska.
Yeah.
He can begin.
Okay, Vina, Steve just texted me and said he's on his way to the meeting, coming into the meeting, having technical issues. And just for the record, I'm showing Mr. Lauer, Mr. Petty, and Mr. Garcia not available.
Yes.
Do we have enough for a quorum? If not, I think Mr. Garcia said if I texted him, he could, he possibly could become available if we really need him.
I know Mr. De Palma is on his way, Steve is on his way, we have Mr. Renna, Ms. Cannon, Mr. Schmitz, Mr. Lanning, Mr. Pink, Chairman Marucci. We have six planning board members and two are, are on their way, so I think we do have a quorum.
Yes, we have six members, that is four, we can, we can.
Okay, very good, okay, now, Vina, on the agenda, I don't see anything about the last meeting's minutes.
Because we didn't have enough time.
Enough time, okay.
Yep, we will provide them at the leader meeting, and we don't have the transcripts either, so.
Excellent, okay, that's what I figured, thank you very much. All right, so we'll start with the first and only application, which is forty-five dash twenty-twenty-one P, Twenty-Twenty Real Estate LLC. And it is, my agenda shows it as a, yeah, it's just, it's just a preliminary site plan and minor subdivision, it's not a final.
That is correct.
Okay, so I guess we'll get started with Mr. Paul Castro.
For the record, Mark Foley Castro, is my audio okay?
Audio is perfect, thank you.
Great, Mr. Gersberg, are you, I see you, how was your audio, could you make it appear?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great, please state your name for the record, please.
I'm from Gersberg, from Twenty-Twenty Acquisitions.
Great.
As a new application, I have to swear your word again.
Sounds good.
Mr. Gersberg, would you please raise your hand, do you swear the testimony, or you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please space, I know you just stated your name, could you spell your last name again, just for the record?
The last name is Gersberg, G-E-R, S as in Sam, Z as in zebra, B as in boy, E-R-G.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you Chairperson Marucci and all the planning board, and now, I guess, with the last one of, I think, the year, I could truly, again, thank you for a long, long week. And I think you put in more hours probably than any planning board in New Jersey, you know, in one week, so I really honestly have to just tell you, I truly appreciate, I think it's a great service you do for the community. Tonight, we'll be talking about one building project, it's approximately four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand square feet, and I'll try to be brief. The difference between this project and maybe a few other projects is that this project is adjacent to some single-family homes, and because of that, we were very sensitive to that, and you'll see that in the plan. Not only is the building setback hundreds and hundreds of feet, many hundreds, but we also have instituted a large berm here with, you'll see fencing and plantings, and we want to just mention that in the forefront that we are very sensitive to that, and we even have sightlines to show that where the neighbors will not see the building as well. So I just want to point out, when you see that, that you realize that that was first and foremost when we designed this plan, that was the first and only thing we really considered to start. And you'll also see finally, very important, is that the, the loading of the trucks is not on the side of the neighbors, rather, it's on the perpendicular side, so they will not hear that loading or unloading, and that was on purpose. And finally, I just want to point out that, you know, as we discuss traffic, I've been pointing this out to numerous last few meetings, and that this use is significantly, significantly less used than alternative uses. If you had apartments here similar to Oaks or anything, it would be hundreds of, hundreds of cars, tons of buses during prime time, and the beauty of warehousing is that most of the action is non-prime time, and I think that's a big benefit of this project. And, you know, we're excited about continuing to provide an amenity and tax rateable for the town for the, for generations to come, and with that, I appreciate your time, and I'm here for any questions now or later, thank you.
Okay, any questions of the board professionals for Mr. Gersberg?
I have none at this time.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Neither do I.
And, okay, any from board members? Okay, and Joe, should we open up to the public now for Mr. Gersberg, or?
Yes, yes, I think that the best is going back to our original procedures where we open up to the public for questions of each individual witness, and then public comment is saved to the back, so just for any member of the public here looking to participate in this hearing. After each witness, you'll be given an opportunity to question that witness, now, your question, there was a questions, not comments, comments will be, there'll be time for comments at the end of the public hearing, you can provide your comments for this, and you'll be sworn in at that time. This is just questions of the witness, and it's questions of witness as to their testimony, so it has to be related to what they testify to. So at this time, we're going to open up to the questions of Mr. Gersberg, questions, witnesses will be opened up at that time after their testimony.
Okay, and if I could just piggyback on to what Mr. Sardillo said, please keep the questions very direct and very succinct and directed only at the testimony that was given by the individual witness that we are opening up the questions to. These have been very long meetings, and we just appreciate your cooperation, okay, so, Vina, do we have any raised hands for questions from Mr. Gersberg?
Yes, we have one raised hand, Nina Jaknowitz.
It's a quick question, Nina Jaknowitz. Do you want me to give my address again?
Yes, please, Mr. Sardillo, could you swear Nina Jo in, please?
No, he doesn't have to be.
Mr. Chairman, we don't, we don't swear in for questions, only for the, for comments.
Okay.
That's why.
Of the Old Bridge Township Planning Board has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of the meeting by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting mailing such announcement to the Home News and Tribune and filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk. Mr. Di Palma, he will be, he's running late and he will join us shortly. Mr. Renna. Mr. Lauer.
Call my name.
I see Mr. Renna is present.
Yes, Mr. Renna is here.
Mr. Lauer.
Yes, here.
I don't, I don't see Mr. Lauer.
I don't see him either. Mr. Lauer, you on video?
Mr. Mamacas. Ms. Cannon.
Here.
Mr. Schmitz.
Here.
Mr. Lanning. Mr. Pink. I see Mr. Pink.
Yeah, I see him.
Chairman Marucci.
Here.
Mr. Petty. I don't see him. Uh, Mr. Garcia.
Uh, Mr. Garcia notified me that he would not be appearing tonight.
Okay. So we have six board members at this time. Mr. Sodillo.
Here.
Mr. Darji.
Present.
Mr. Kalyo Kilani.
Here.
Mr. Lavallo.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
The Savannah Township Planner, I'm here. Uh, Mr. Metzer.
Uh, Dino, this is, uh, Brian Prosska.
Mr. Prosska. He can begin.
Okay, Vina, uh, Steve just texted me and said he's on his way to the meeting, coming into the meeting, having technical issues. Um, and just for the record, I'm showing Mr. Lauer, Mr. Petty, and Mr. Garcia not available.
Yes.
Uh, do we have enough for a quorum? If not, I think Mr. Garcia said if I texted him, he could, he possibly could become available. If we really need him.
I know Mr. Di Palma is on his way, uh, Steve is on his way. We have Mr. Renna, Ms. Cannon, Mr. Schmitz, um, Mr. Lanning, Mr. Pink, Chairman Marucci, we have six planning board members and two are, uh, are on their way. So I think we do have a quorum.
Yes, we have six members that is core. We can, we can. Excellent. Okay. Very good. Okay. Now, Vina, on the agenda, I don't see anything about, uh, the last meeting's minutes.
Because we didn't have enough time.
Enough time, okay.
Yep, we will provide them at the leader meeting and we don't have the transcripts either, so.
Excellent. Okay, that's what I figured. Thank you very much. All right. So we'll start with, uh, the first and only application, which is, uh, forty-five dash twenty-twenty-one P, Twenty-Twenty Real Estate LLC. And it is, uh, my agenda shows it as a, yeah, it's just, it's just a preliminary site plan and minor subdivision. It's not a final.
That is correct.
Okay, so I guess we'll get started with, uh, Mr. Paul Castro.
For the record, Mark Foley Castro, is my audio okay?
Audio is perfect. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Gersberg, are you, I see you. How is your audio? Could you make it appear?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. Please state your name for the record, please.
I'm from Gersberg, from Twenty-Twenty Acquisitions.
Great.
As, as a new application, I have to swear your word again.
Sounds good.
Mr. Gersberg, would you please raise your hand? Do you swear the testimony or you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And, uh, please space, I know you just stated your name. Could you spell your last name again, just for the record?
The last name is Gersberg, G-E-R-S as in Sam, Z as in zebra, B as in boy, E-R-G.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, thank you Chairperson Marucci, um, and all the planning board. And now I guess with the last one of, I think, the year, I could truly again thank you for a, a, a long, long week. And I think you put in more hours probably than any planning board in New Jersey. Uh, you know, in, in one week. So I, I really honestly have to just tell you, I, I truly appreciate, I think it's a great service you do for the community. Um, tonight we'll be talking about one building project. It's approximately four hundred ninety-five thousand square feet. Um, and I'll try to be brief. Um, the difference between, um, this project and maybe a few other projects is that, um, this project is adjacent to some single-family homes. And because of that, we were very sensitive, uh, to that, and you'll see that in the plan. Um, not only is the building setback hundreds and hundreds of feet, many hundreds, um, but we also have, uh, instituted a, a large berm here with, um, you'll see fencing and plantings, and we want to just mention that in the forefront that we are very sensitive to that, and we even have sightlines to show that where the, uh, neighbors will not see the building as well. So I just want to point out, uh, uh, when you see that, that you realize that that was first and foremost when we designed this plan, uh, that was the first and only thing we really considered to start. Um, and you'll also see finally, very important is that the, um, the loading of the trucks is not on the side of the neighbors, rather it's on the particular side. So they will not hear, uh, that loading or unloading, um, uh, and that was on purpose. Um, and finally, I just want to point out that, you know, as we discuss, um, traffic, I, I've been pointing this out to numerous, uh, the last few meetings, and that this use is significantly, significantly less used than the alternative uses. Um, if you had apartments here similar to Oaks or anything, it would be hundreds of hundreds of cars, um, tons of buses during prime time, and, and the beauty of uh, warehousing is that most of the action is non-prime time. And I think that's a big benefit of this project. And, you know, we're excited about continuing to, um, provide an amenity and tax rateable for the town for the, for generations to come. And, um, with that, I, I appreciate your time and I'm here for any questions now or later. Thank you.
Okay, any questions of the board professionals for Mr. Gersberg?
I have none at this time.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Neither do I.
And, okay, any from, uh, board members? Okay, and, and Joe, should we open up to the public now for Mr. Gersberg or?
Yes, yes, I think that, uh, the best is going back to our original, um, uh, procedures where we open up to the public for questions of each individual, uh, witness, and then, um, public comment is saved to the back. So just for any member of the public here, um, looking, uh, to participate in this hearing, after each witness, you'll be given an opportunity to question that witness. Now, your question, those are questions, not comments. Comments will be, there'll be time for comments at the end of the public hearing. Uh, you can provide your comments for this and you'll be sworn in at that time. This is just questions of the witness and it's questions of witness as to their testimony. Um, so it has to be related to what they testify to. So at this time, we're going to open it up to the, the questions of Mr. Gersberg. Uh, questions, witnesses will be, uh, opened up at that time after their testimony.
Okay, and if I could just piggyback on to what Mr. Sodillo said, uh, please keep the questions very direct and very succinct and directed only at the testimony that was given by the individual witness that we are opening up the questions to. Uh, these have been very long meetings and we just appreciate your, uh, cooperation. Okay, so Vina, do we have any, uh, raised hands for questions from Mr. Gersberg?
Yes, uh, we have one raised hand. Uh, Nina Jaknowitz.
It's a quick question, Nina Jaknowitz. Do you want me to give my address again?
Yes, please. Mr. Sodillo, could you swear Nina Jo in, please?
No, he doesn't have to be.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, we don't, we don't swear in for questions, only for the, the, um, for comments.
Okay.
So you can, that's why these are limited just for questions. Any comments will be at the end when they're sworn in.
Excellent, thank you.
Brilliant, it's really quick. Four hundred ninety-seven thousand square feet, right, sir?
Approximately.
Okay, brilliant. How much money are you going to pay the township in taxes for that building? Property.
It's, it's not.
This is not a question directed toward his testimony. The questions must be succinct as directed toward his testimony only. And I'm, I'm going to put a stop to this.
No, no questions, sir. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
There are no raised hands.
Okay, very good. Let's move on then. Thank you.
Great, I will call Mr. Cahill, please. Good evening, Mr. Cahill.
Good evening, how we doing?
Doing well.
Good evening, Mr. Cahill. Uh, I see you raised your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you please, uh, state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Certainly. Keith Cahill, C-A-H-I-L-L, with the firm of Bowler Engineering, located at thirty Independence Boulevard in Warren, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Great, briefly, your credentials, Mr. Cahill.
Certainly, um, I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey. Uh, I'm, I have a civil engineering degree from Rutgers University, master's degree from Stevens Institute of Technology, testified throughout the state of New Jersey in excess of a hundred different municipalities, except as a civil engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill.
Thank you, and thank you, board members, again. Good to see you. It's been a long time. Hope everyone's doing well. And, uh, I'll jump right to, uh, my testimony this evening and I'll start with my first exhibit uh, with and, um, with an aerial exhibit. Okay, Mark, you can see that, correct?
I can.
Okay, great.
And this will be.
Aerial exhibit dated twelve fifteen twenty-one. We'll mark this A1. And it's prepared by Bowler Engineering. For reference, north is to the right side of the page. And you will see the site is located, uh, to the east of Route Nine, which is running left to right, north-south direction at the top of the page, as well as County Route six eighty-seven, along the bottom of our page, also heading in a north-south direction. We're essentially at the southeast corner of Jake Brown Road and US Route Nine. I've outlined this site, uh, in yellow. It encompasses a hundred and fourteen point one-three acres and it's located in the I-Three Zone. The site is comprised of two lots, Lot One eleven, and a smaller lot, Lot Three. Um, as noted, this is in the I-Three Zone, and this is a permitted use. Um, and that, uh, and just to give you some idea of what's surrounding, as you can see in the aerial, to the north, we have some vacant land. Um, to the south, we do have some, uh, residential apartments to the south and vacant land also to the south. To the east, as mentioned, uh, we do have, uh, a couple of single-family homes up along Route six eighty-seven or, or Cottrell Road. Uh, and then to the west, we have Route Nine and the Route Nine Jug Handle there and vacant land beyond that. Currently, the site, um, is essentially being farmed and the balance of the site is, uh, wi- wi- with trees. I will note, um, on this site, um, it is encumbered with numerous, uh, streams and ditches that have created environmentally sensitive areas in terms of a flood hazard area and wetlands. And all of tonight's, uh, improvements are outside of those environmentally sensitive areas. They are being preserved as part of the, uh, goals of the I-Three Zone, uh, and the redevelopment plan. Um, I think that gives a good idea, and just, just in general, all the water and or grading, I'll say, let's start with the grading. The high point of the site is to the east, along County Route six eighty-seven, and sheds towards the west where Route Nine is. Essentially, there's two, uh, streams, and we've talked about one of them before in the past. The, the, the tenant brook, uh, and essentially our development is between the tenant brook and the vacant farm fields and some tributary, unnamed tributaries that go into the tenant brook and cross. So you'll notice that all of our stormwater management, when I talk about in the future, is just going to put the water back to where it goes today, which is back into the tenant brook, but obviously go through our stormwater management systems. Uh, I just want to point out Jake Brown Road along our northern property line. It's truly only improved in terms of the westernmost portion, right at the jug handle. Soon as you get beyond that in the DOT jurisdiction, it becomes more of a gravel road until it comes all the way back to, um, you get back towards Spring Hill Road and, and Cottrell Road, where there are a couple of single-family homes, and it is paved for that last section, uh, before it gets over. But I'll note that paved area truly isn't connected over to the, the Route Nine, uh, other than from a gravel road, um, difficult to drive on. Think I'll jump into our, um, proposed improvements and share my next exhibit. Okay. Oh, sorry, sorry, zoom out a little bit here, sorry. This will be Exhibit A2, uh, prepared or dated twelve-two twenty-one, prepared by Bowler Engineering. It's Sheet C three oh one entitled Overall Site Layout Plan. This plan is the exact same sheet that's within your site plan package, except we've colorized items, uh, for ease of testimony this evening. Um, in terms of that, just big picture, again, north will be to the right side of the page. You can see Route, uh, Route Nine going left to right on the far top of the page. And again, Cottrell Road, uh, along the bottom of the page, again, heading from left to right or in a north-south direction. Um, Jake Brown Road, as noted, is along our northern property line. Um, and you'll notice there's a lot of, um, dark areas that are shaded and hatched, which is essentially the existing environmentally sensitive areas that I noted in the aerial. Um, all of these are, have buffers, um, and flood hazard areas associated to these streams. And you'll notice the tenant brook, which runs from Cottrell Road all the way to the top of the page of Route Nine, is along our, um, southern property line, or excuse me, our southern, uh, development line of where we've disturbed the land. And along the northern side of our development, we have existing, um, tributary, uh, ditches that contribute and tie back into the tenant brook. We've developed in between, and essentially these environmentally sensitive areas is what has driven the entire layout of this project. It is different than others on how and where we've located, um, the access drives, and I'll get into that as I go, but we're minimizing any impact. Again, staying within the DEP for our LOI, which, as I mentioned, is about to be released in our prior testimonies for the other sites, from the same situation here. Similarly with the flood hazard area, verification lines. And again, the intent here is to be one hundred percent compliant with the NJDEP's regulations for permitting for this project. Um, as noted as well, I want to point out, farthest to the east side of this site where, uh, where Afra mentioned, there's, uh, some single-family homes. We have proposed a large berm, uh, and I'll get into the details of that, that provide a vertical separation from our proposed development and its landscape, as well as a horizontal separation, as intended by, uh, the regulations and your ordinance, um, for separation and buffering to the residents. Point out a couple of other things. We are proposing to improve Jake Brown Road. As I mentioned, it's currently a gravel road. Uh, we would be dedicating, uh, a right-of-way as we, as required in the redevelopment plan of these. And then. And then improving the, uh, uh, the cartway of Jake Brown Road to the east, uh, to our driveway as proposed, I'll like zoom in in a moment, at a width of approximately thirty-six feet. As it travels further to the east, um, we are going to throat down or neck down the width of the road down to about twenty-five feet. And as we get close to different environmentally sensitive areas, um, again, it's, it's being confined. Couple other key features, and I forgot to mention in the area, but I'll point it out here, it's a little bit more visible. Um, starting in the northwest corner of our aerial, starting at the top right-hand corner, and traversing, uh, in a southeasterly direction are overhead power lines. These are the large JCPL, JCPNL transmission lines. You've seen them in terms of the, the very large, um, I'll say robot-looking type, uh, structures, towers that hold these lines up that cuts across our site in a, uh, southeasterly direction, uh, and then continues across, uh, crosses Jake Brown Road, comes across our site, and then again, across Cottrell Road. Uh, again, another key component that drives the design of this site to be fully compliant with the redevelopment plan and the bulk criteria, uh, requirements of this site. Everything that we're proposing here is fully compliant in terms of the bulk requirements for setback, coverage, parking, uh, loading spaces, et cetera. Um, and the intent here is to be fully compliant. Your professionals did point out of a couple areas that we will work with them again, as mentioned previously, to assure that this stays in compliance with the redevelopment plan and the bulk standards of this zone. I'll zoom in a little bit further to, um, so as you can see, and as I mentioned, coming off from, starting at the western point of the Route Nine, Jake Brown Road intersection, you travel approximately a hundred and fifty feet when you come to the entrance of our driveway. We've selected this location because of our crossing of the, uh, the stream that's in place. Again, we need to comply with the DEP's regulations, minimize disturbance, um, and to, to obtain our general permits from them, which again, uh, we feel that all of our components are fully in compliance with the regulations. This is why the selection of this, uh, driveway location was approximately seven hundred and fifty feet. We'd come into the site where we are proposing a single building, uh, a total of, as mentioned before, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-four square feet, which comprises of ten thousand square feet of office, um, and a total warehouse space of four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-four square feet. Just to go around the site as proposed, um, the, the building and the warehouse component of it, we are proposing a hundred and seven loading docks with fifty-eight docks along our south side of the building, uh, forty-nine on the north side of the building, um, and also four drive-up ramps, one in each of those corners, north, southeast, and west, uh, in terms of at the ends of those loading doors. Um, in addition to that, we have two areas for parking, um, where we have, um, two hundred and fifty-two total parking spaces. You'll notice on the west side of the building, we have a hundred and forty-one parking stalls, and on the south side, or excuse me, the west, uh, east side of the building, excuse me, one hundred and eleven parking stalls proposed there. As part of this improvement, uh, again, we will be fully compliant in terms of ADA parking stalls. We are proposing eleven electrical charging spaces for this, uh, in addition to sixty-seven bike spaces, which would be divided up pretty much evenly between the east and the west side of the building, where we anticipate having two office areas. The ten thousand square feet, we're going to assume is split up about fifty-fifty, being on both the west side of the building as well as the east side of the building, adjacent to the, uh, parking stalls. Excuse me. Um, before I zoom in a little bit further and zoom in and discuss a lot of the improvements in and around the building itself, you will notice, um, a parking area that we had proposed as banked parking truck, uh, truck trailer spaces. Um, again, this would be accessed off of, uh, Jake Brown Road. As reviewed and discussed with your professionals, after we've submitted this project and discussing, uh, today in terms of the review letters, this parking lot shown, again, what I'll say is to the north side of the building, uh, adjacent to Jake Brown Road or the south side of Jake Brown Road within our lot area, um, has been determined that we would be eliminating that. We're not going to propose that anymore. The concern was, is that it's not directly connected to our building. Um, therefore, it could be construed as a separate parking lot, and we didn't want to create any use concerns. The reason why it is separated from our development, as I mentioned, is the environmentally sensitive areas relative to the existing ditches and wetland buffers and flood hazard areas. We truly could not cross in this area, and the only crossing location would be to continue on Jake Brown Road, actually heading west and get back into our driveway. So for the record, this area, north of our building, just south of Jake Brown Road, which we had, um, a hundred and thirty-nine of banked truck parking stalls that will be removed from our proposal and our application, and at this point would be remaining as vacant land. Just to zoom in a slight, a little bit further on this project, and I'll start again on the west side of the building and circulate around some. Uh, the circulation lanes around this site, again, similar to the other developments I've described in terms of the, the truck routes, the thirty-foot wide cartways, they're designed in terms of the width and the turning radiuses for a WB sixty-seven tractor trailer, which is the, the largest tractor trailer, uh, the NJDOT allows on Route Nine, um, or in the state. Uh, we have fifty-foot radiuses at the intersections and the turns at a minimum. Um, in regards, and you can see that as it circulates around our site as well, that thirty-foot drive aisle continues around. Um, in the areas similar to what was described previously, and I'll start on the both, uh, the south side of the building, our, our truck courtyards will have seventy-foot wide maneuvering space, and then the loading doors or the spaces are sixty feet deep, and they're each thirteen and a half feet wide. Um, similarly, on the north side, same type of geometry. You will note our power lines, as I mentioned, coming across, and we are not proposing any trailer spaces underneath of them. We are proposing an additional twenty-two trailer spaces along the north side, uh, of the building, uh, and I'll say on the east and the west side of those power lines that exist there. Um, on the south side of the building, again, you can see the, the parking stalls for the vehicles, uh, again, being compliant with ADA stalls, and the circulation lanes for the cars is again similar to what I've described before, twenty-four feet width in the nine-by-eighteen parking stalls, uh, and ADA compliant. Now, in terms of what we're showing here, in addition on the, um, south, excuse me, the, the east side of the building is a total of two hundred and thirty-three banked trailer spaces on the east side, where we would have a circulation lane, again, of seventy feet to circulate around that. Um, we are banking them at this time and reserving the rights to do it. Again, all of our design in terms of stormwater management, things to that nature, are designed for that area of impervious coverage. Um, but as this time we are showing them being banked, they are, I'll call them in tandem in terms of being able to back them up, two, two spaces deep here and in the, in the area, uh, farther to the east, three spaces deep there. Just in general, too, I want to just point out, this building sits off of Route Nine, when you look in this area, uh, in excess of a thousand feet, uh, approximately eleven hundred feet, um, and in terms of directly off of the, the nearest property line to the north, um, in excess of eight hundred feet. Uh, again, looking to the north, this building is set back across the wooded area in excess of three hundred feet. And then looking to the south, the areas of untouched forest, uh, again, in excess of twelve hundred feet uh, away from our nearest property line. When I zoom back down and, and look to the east, the eastern portion, buildings at least two hundred feet, again, from our southern property line, um, in excess of uh, approximately six hundred feet, just short of six hundred feet to the nearest residential property line to the east. And if we measured to the, um, the right-of-way of Cottrell, just, uh, just shy of eight hundred feet there. Again, what you see here, and I'll zoom in a little bit further, because this will be a little bit, more significant testimony and a couple new exhibits for you this evening. This heavily, uh, vegetated area with evergreens is the berm. And to, just to give you a little bit of, uh, area, uh, size and dimension of it, this berm uh, is approximately, um, sixteen feet higher than the adjacent residents in the, uh, north west corne- northeast corner here, and its width, uh, is about a hundred and forty. north west corner, northeast corner here and its width is about 140 feet in an east-west direction. As we come to this, towards the south, it does get a little bit lower. And we get down into about 12 feet of height at the lowest point relative to the adjacent properties to the east. And this berm width is about 80 feet and I'll show you that in detail in a moment. Just a couple other quick facts and items that I talked about previously. All of the truck parking stalls for just the trailers are 12 by 50. In terms of dimensions and there's 22 of theirs proposed along the north side. In terms of cars, there's total 252 parking spaces at nine by 18. Split up between the east and the west side of the building. In terms of utilities, very similar to the prior designs, we circulate our site. For a water main, 10 inch water main for fire suppression. We also have gas and electric coming into our site, entering our building in the excuse me, in the northwest corner. Those services for water, electric and gas are coming off of Cottrell and I'll I'll point to the area. It's on the north side of Lot four here that there is a clearing currently out to the roadway. We will be picking up those utilities to bring them into the sites. And then, you know, as noted, we are vegetating the areas to screen this into the sites after upon bringing those utilities in. In terms of sanitary sewer, we do collect both the areas of where the office plate of spaces would be. And that goes to the north or excuse me, to the west, where the top of the page. And heads out to an existing sanitary manhole up by Route nine. And again, we're clearing through and following the regulations of of the DEP to apply for the permission to tie in. We do have applications with the Old Bridge MUA in terms of review. And intend to obtain full approvals from them as this process continues to move forward. In terms of store boarder management. Similar to our prior discussion, we are fully compliant with the and design intent and intending to obtain all permits from the DEP. And meeting their new regulations in terms of the green infrastructure regulations that were passed this year. We have a combination of six different basins to handle this area. Again, a combination of a constructed wetlands, you can see that in building basin number one on the west side. We have a multitude of bio retention basins. Two of them are located on the north west corner of the buildings that are collecting portions of the property. We are utilizing porous pavement again in this to provide water quality for the water that's filtrating into the ground. We also have stormwater detention basins both in the south side. In terms of a infiltration basin as well on the southwest corner or southeast corner, excuse me. And an infiltration and an infiltration basin as well for water quality. The combination of all these items again, collecting it from a local, very close to the source of the import of the impervious pavement. Or the impervious coverage, treating it for water quality and meeting all of the reductions. In terms of the two 10 and 100 year storm. And we're also providing a water to get recharged back into the ground. Your professionals have noted that we are in compliance with the regulations. And are truly creating, again, I'll call it a habitat, transitional habitat for our stormwater management systems. That does discharge back into the environmentally sensitive areas in terms of streams and ditches that exist today. And will be reducing that water as it continues and travels from this page, from the bottom of the page north or from east to west in the tenant brook. I think that gives you a good idea again that we are fully compliant. For the stormwater management and intend to address all the comments raised from your professionals in regards to the grading, the stormwater management and a couple comments and utilities. Just want to hit on lighting too, very similar design as we've used in the prior discussions that I've been in front of this board on for the industrial buildings. We're using 30 foot high poles, the LED fixtures. We are staying outside of the overhead limits of the the power lines. And I just want to point out, we did submit this plan to JCP and L. They have reviewed it. They have issued an approval for our project. That letter has been submitted to the to the to your professionals as well, so they're perfectly aware of it. And while we go through construction, there'll be times when JCP and L is out on site, making sure that we're doing what you know, to be for safe for safety reasons. So again, no concerns with that. I know it's cutting through the site, but again. We are fully compliant with what they would want and for safety reasons as well. In terms of landscaping.
How about spill over with the lighting, Mr. Cahill, in terms of?
Yes, great. Thank you, Mark, for bringing that back. We do intend to comply in terms of light levels. And not overspilling any of the property lines, meeting all the light levels. We're actually a little bit lower than what the ordinance had asked for. Because of some of the areas where the light poles can't be, but it's also in areas where trucks, tractor, the trailers are just parked. So again, it's a safe design, but again, it won't provide any glare off the off of the property.
Great, thanks.
I think it's at this point a very, it's a good time to show two new exhibits that you haven't seen in my prior presentations. And again, it's it's basically looking and I'm just going to refer to this exhibit A2 to show you what we're gonna with the next exhibit I wanted to present. Essentially, we're taking a cross sectional view. As if we were standing on Lot 16, which is, excuse me, in the southeast corner along Cottrell Road against our frontage and looking towards our site. And what you would see relative to the berm and other structures that would be in the area all the way to our building. And then we took another cross section looking at Lot 6.11, which what I'd say is directly opposite of the building due due east. To give you an idea of what the view is there. As I mentioned, as you go further to the to the north, the berm really gets even higher and wider. And with that, the lots, I'll say Lot six, I think it's four and five, excuse me. They're really not as critical as you'll note because the areas of the berm getting a little bit lower are to the south. So they're the ones I'm showing you and we'll show how we're mitigating a visual impact. And any aspect of operations due to a vertical landscape buffer, a berm. Creating the buffer in accordance with the requirements of your ordinance. So with that, I'll stop sharing this one and go to my third exhibit. This is going to be marked as A3. And it's entitled Cross Section Exhibit A. And it's prepared by Bowler Engineering. And today, today are the date is 12 13 21 on this exhibit. What this shows is two key views. The top view is an aerial view. And if I had to say if I'm looking down, you'll see here north, north will be to the bottom and south will be to the top. To the left or to the east, as I mentioned, and I'll zoom in here and you can see Lot 16. And what I've done, and just so you can see the aerial underneath, the area of the planting. And it's very hard to see, but I'll try to get you in there a little bit hard further. You can see the contour lines that are running underneath there, which is really the berm. And I know this isn't planned view, so you you're trying to figure out what we're going to do. This A section runs all the way over to where the building would be proposed. This is our building, parking area, and we're going to be looking to the south. As I pull up the cross section. So zooming in here, cross section AA, which is at the bottom of this exhibit. From this view again, pay it, plan left is to the east. And it's towards Cottrell Road, Lot 6.11. And as you travel to plan right, you're coming across and heading towards where our proposed building is. And within that, I have a vertical component here of showing what is the elements relative to this. So now I'm going to zoom in to get you in here tight. How the berm is going to look. And have the impact of screening to the residents to the east. This is done to scale. Basically, every little bar is five feet and then to the left to right is 10 feet. Now, what we've done is shown the backyards and looking at what you would see coming over to the berm. One of the items that we did as well as seeing, I think I called it the robot of the tower that carries the power lines. Now, I'm going to say it's approximate height based on what we've done. But this is to what I'll say scale because we did not shoot the top. What we do have is the height of every wire that is on our survey. And that's how we came to what this structure would be. And again, this is looking south as if I cut a line. And if you're standing to the left, looking towards the site, what you see here is the berm. And I'm going to say this is the lowest portion of the berm, the southern section, as I mentioned. It's about 10 to 11 feet higher than the grade in the backyard of the house to the east. And we planted evergreens, six to seven foot evergreens across the top of the berm. There was a comment from your professionals asking us to put it at the highest point of the berm. We have no concern. Our our client also has added, which isn't shown on the plan today, but I showed it here. That we are proposing an eight foot high board on board fence on top of this berm. So on day one, you're going to have a berm that's sticking up in this area relative to their backyard, approximately 11 feet above their grade. And then throwing an eight foot high fence on top. So you're really getting up almost eight and 19 feet there at top of that berm. And when you start to look from your backyard and look across. That red line is really the line of sight that you would have towards your building. And you're catching it, you're actually, that line is going to be above the rooftop. If you notice here, I'm showing a dimension of that line of sight, 6.6 feet. The height of the building, the height of the fence we're proposing is eight feet. So you'd actually, if you looked up, that I would look over top of the building. We are showing five year growth on these evergreens, but as I mentioned, they're six to seven foot tall. And they're going to continue to grow over time and only provide, it's a double stagger row, really a great living shield to that view. Obviously, the structures in the back of the site of the tower is going to be visible. We're not screening that, but what our impact shows. Is the building would be strained, the area of banked truck parking again is shielded, you'd be above it. So you wouldn't see those as well. Therefore, the visual impact is mitigated for this for the residents to the east. Again, the dimension here, if you're starting to look off from the property line to the at back edge of the of the berm. Where we're getting back to grade, you're getting out almost 100 feet from there when you get to the bottom of that berm. And then, as you can see, there's a significant distance along the bottom. You can see in in 50 foot increments how far away that building is. And as I mentioned, it's just about 600 feet or two football fields away from that property line. I think that really gives you a good idea what we're doing here in terms of screening, mitigating and having a true vertical wall, which is an earth berm separating this use from the residential uses to the east. And as mentioned, we're adding an eight foot high board on board fence. So I want to go to my second exhibit, or I'm sorry, my fourth exhibit here, which is my cross sectional exhibit.
Have we been marking, have we been marking these exhibits?
Yes, we have.
Okay, thank you.
So this Keith is a new one for A4?
This is A4, cross sectional, cross section exhibit B, prepared by Bowler Engineering. And this is taken in the same orientation.
Sorry, what's the date on this?
I'm sorry, it's 12 13 21. Again, two views on this one drawing, an aerial view and plan view where shows where we're taking section B. The shortest distance from the residence directly to the building. And then below it is the cross section. So again, as I, as you look in here, those circles is the proposed landscaping where the berm is. And when I start zooming into the bottom, we'll see the impact here where the berm is a little bit higher. You'll see again where we're proposing the fence and the visual and preventing any visual impact to our proposed building. Okay, again here, in terms of the view looking out. We are showing that eight foot high board on board fence. And if you're looking out from the backyard at four and a half feet, you're looking at the fence or you'd be looking over top of the building. I'm sorry, you'd be hitting, you'd see the fence. But you would, as I pan across, you could see you're going over top of the building. Therefore, with the fence at eight feet, you're going to see above the building. Now, in this view, I didn't show the tower in view. That would be further in plan or into the page. But again, what the point is, is that this berm is providing a vertical separation, a horizontal separation from the residential uses. The line of sights are well above the trailer parking and above the building. So again, we've mitigated the visual impact, the separation in any operational aspect by the distance. The vertical separation with the berm and the planting on top. And the comments in terms of landscaping, again, our intention is to work with your professionals to provide what they're looking for. So with that, Mark, I believe is what I wanted to present in direct testimony. In terms of mitigating the site plan design and the layout of why and how we've laid things out. And in addressing the critical elements of the site planets in front of the the board this evening.
That's all we have for this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Cahill. Now from our board professionals, Vina, do you have anything from Mr. Cahill and his testimony regarding the site plan?
I would ask Rakesh and Mr. Kalio Kalani to go first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You okay for me going first? Sure, all right. Age for beauty, he says. Actually, I do have a quick question for Keith. On the illustration, if you can share that screen again, I do have a question about that. The bank parking that you're no longer proposing, the improvements going back. However, you are proposing that, right, Keith? Can you, can you just?
Yeah, thank you. As I just pulled up the exhibit being exactly where you're, I think you're talking, I just want to add a little additional testimony. We are intending to continue Jake Brown Road further to the east. And we would end it and essentially construct the cul-de-sac at the end. In the event anybody came down. They would be able to turn around and go back out. But the improvements relative to that parking would all be eliminated, including that drive aisle. We just have a bulb at the end. And I think, and thank you for bringing this back to me, as part of the redevelopment plan, it did indicate to provide circulation and pedestrian circulation, bike paths, as well as emergency access. From where what I'll call the end of Jake Brown Road that we would be improving. To where it currently ends coming off of Cottrell Road. So as you can see in the exhibit, and I'm looking in the far north east corner. As if you're coming off of Cottrell, heading in a westerly direction, you can see the residential homes that have a roadway there now. Our intent, there is asphalt that goes beyond those houses, crosses a ditch and comes back to where the road turns into gravel again. We intend to where that road turns into gravel, construct our turnaround. But allow and make sure as as requested, emergency vehicles could go through there only. And I think the comment was to make it grass pavers, but have it be accessible as it is today, by the way. For bikes and pedestrians to continue across it. The improvements from our end would end in this area shown further to the west of that. And to give you an idea of scale, it it it's approximately from that closest house, 250 feet to the west. Where our improvements would end. I want to point out, there is existing improvements there, gravel and asphalt that exist. But we are going to stop short of that, but make sure that it's a accessible route as requested in your review letters.
And then, as far as the, I believe the redevelopment plan had said that the intention for that that 24 foot wide area was for emergency access and for a pedestrian cyclist path. Would we be able to work with you guys to figure out a way of surfacing that area? Obviously, we want the grass pavers to support the emergency vehicles, but for, for cyclists, we would need a riding surface that cyclists could actually ride on. So we
We can work with you on that. Like I said, the first and foremost, from a safety standpoint or the emergency vehicles. So it'll be sturdy and stable. And then to your point, so it's a surface that can be traversed safely with bikes.
And Mr. Chairman, our office did issue a memo, it's a joint memo with, with the township's planning, planning department with Vina. It's dated, dated today, December 15th. We did have a chance to have a brief meeting with Mr. Cahill and the applicants, other professionals to discuss the memo. The memo is quite detailed as far as some modifications and some clarifications and some additional information that we, that we'd like to have shown on the plans. And I think Mr. Cahill provided testimony and also indicated during our meeting earlier that they'd be amenable to satisfying the comments in our review letter. And he has provided all the testimony that I believe we'd requested in our, in our review letter. So I don't have any direct questions, any other direct questions for Mr. Cahill at the time, at this time. But I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have regarding the engineering aspects. And then I'll defer to Vina and Tim for the planning and landscape architecture aspect.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dorji.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I just want to go over some of the buffer. I've had a chance to look at it in depth and what they're proposing there is it's a nice mix of evergreen. Can you hear me?
Marty, okay, Marty just muted, okay.
Good.
Yep.
I just wanted to go into a little detail on what they're proposing for the residential area. There, the plant list they've got there is pretty good. It's a mix of evergreen trees, Douglas firs, Norway spruce, white pines. They've got shade trees, oak trees, sugar maples, and they've got ornamental trees, red buds and dogwoods that flower. So over time, it's going to be a nice, nice buffer. One of the things we discussed with Keith today in our little pre-meeting was instituting some drip irrigation along there to help promote the growth during times when, you know, drought, you know, dry time. So we want to get that, that buffer to grow. I mean, these, these trees, ideally, you know, the Norway spruce, the evergreen trees, I mean, they'll get 50, 60 feet tall. Obviously, the oak, you know, oak trees and, and maples will get 50, 60 feet tall. And the ornamental trees up there are like 30, 40 feet tall. So it'll be
We agree with you. We'll, we'll provide the drip irrigation.
Very good. All right. And again, we have a long list of landscaping comments, which Keith has already agreed to address with us. So that's all I just wanted to say.
Mr. Chairman, I actually do have one, one question after, while Tim was, was talking that occurred to me. Keith, during our conversation earlier this afternoon or this evening, the, we talked about possibly sliding that parking area that's to the east, a little bit further west away from the residents down there where you have that substantial buffer, substantial berm already. But just to give it a little bit more space from, from the truck areas, is that something that, that we can take a look at?
So what, yeah, what I've talked about that, and what we think we can do without a problem, I know is one of the questions is like, when, when you tandem park vehicles like this, we can actually do that because sometimes you're not truly driving them. They almost use something like a tug where they, they often use a tug to place them. So it's a lot easier to place them and pull them in and out. So our thought was we could eliminate the circulation lane that's farthest to the east and only maintain the one that's in front, or I'll say on the west side of the bank stalls. Therefore, you know, having that circulation lane in there is, is a good idea. And we can have it when we construct the bank stalls, we would not need to have that loop around. So again, we're adding, I'll say we're providing an additional approximately 60 feet of circulation lane that would go back to green grass. So be reducing more. So we can do that, but we would like to reserve the rights to have those spaces for tandem parking and we'd circulate, we would access them all from the west side.
And, and do we need to consult with our fire safety officials regarding the circulation lane?
We did, we did get a letter from them and it's very similar to the letters I've had from the other two locations. And, and again, talking to them previously, making sure that we stripe and sign the way they need to. They're reviewing the locations of our hydrants. Again, make sure we have adequate pressure for everywhere. And the circulation, again, as I mentioned, because we're designing the circulation for WB67 tractor trailer, it, it circulates with adequate space for the largest vehicle that they would utilize for fighting a fire.
But if we're removing that lower circulation lane, they, they wouldn't have an issue with that?
And you know what, I'll, that's a great comment and question. We'll confirm that, that in terms of that, we don't have an issue. But again, they would have access along, full access along the western side of it. So we'll look at it. And if there is a problem with it, not that I would ask to do this unless you wanted to, but we could provide again, a supported surface so that a vehicle could get there if they, if they needed to.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to make sure that we get their blessing.
Yes, agreed.
That's all I have for the applicant engineer at this time, Mr. Chairman. I, I'd be in favor of, of course, granted, you know, the fire marshal would be, would be amenable to it. I would be in favor of eliminating that, that circulation drive out that's for the east.
Chairman Marucci, actually, I just want to bring to the board's attention, the redevelopment plan specifically does not allow for tandem parking. It would be a waiver, but I would fully support, just like Rakesh, because there we are reducing the impervious coverage and we are adding more green space, increasing the buffer. So it would make sense to have that waiver granted. So I would fully support the waiver. If in near future, we have to amend the redevelopment plan, maybe that should be something we will consider. I, I always feel in such instances tandem parking works and we should support it.
Thank you.
Keith, a question for you, I don't know if I missed it, but I, with the Jake Brown Road, the composition, the different segments that are included in the redevelopment plan. So are you in compliance with the plan? Because I know the circulation plan specifically says that your right of way should be 60 feet for the first 1,500 linear feet. And then beyond that would be the fire access lane. And then on Catrel side, it would terminate into a cul-de-sac. I see that it complies with certain aspects, but with the 1,500, would you still be in compliance after you eliminate this parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll stay in compliance with, with that master plan and make sure that the circulation there and that the connectivity that you've asked for will be provided.
And you will work with the township officials, the board consultants on the roadway improvements, correct?
Yes.
That's all on my end. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
I see Mr. Fire Chief has his hand raised. Mr. Garrity?
Yes, I just want to make a comment on the removal of the western driveway. I would be amenable to a 20 foot fire road along that producing its 20 feet, but not totally eliminating it if you're going to have a three tier bank along that west side. And also the roadway, I'd like to take a closer look at that. If it's the township, oh, sorry, we got a call from him. Just listen to what that is, please.
Okay, take your time.
Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting, I'm going to make a few comments.
Absolutely, Gary, go ahead.
Then Mr. Garrity comes on, I'll
Appreciate you filling up the space.
Sure. Now, Keith, are you willing to agree the way you have in the past, but complying with the report and working with me on a couple of issues in the report I filed?
Yep, Gary, we want to, we want to go through your report with you and work with you in terms of everything that you've asked for in there.
I see Tom is back on, let Tom finish and I'll jump back on.
Okay, sorry, on Catrel, Jake Brown connection, is it the intent of the township to have that just for emergency use or continue to have that for everyday traffic use as well? Can any of the township professionals answer that?
Vina?
Go ahead, Vina.
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
So Is it, is it detached? Oh, somebody can answer it this one.
Yeah, Tom, the, the intention is for that to be for emergency use only.
Okay, so there are some options on that, that if we like, there can be an electronic gate put on that so that no cars can pass that. And that emergency sirens, as soon as they're hit near it, it can open a gate and allow it to pass through. But I would certainly want that to have not block pavers, but fully paved all the way through because of, that is one of our main arteries. If something happens on around mine or something happens on Catrel Road where we can make the shortcut in. The other, the other question I have, is there any way to where the utility, the utilities are coming into the north, northwest corner? I guess where the gas and everything is coming from off of Catrel Road into the property. Is that going to be something that we can put a fire road on to get an immediate access to the western most north corner of that property? Is that something we can look at or is that un-dra, unsupportable?
I would have to look at that and, and just, just for the record, this is the easternmost portion of the property.
I'm sorry, eastern, correct.
Yep. And I did note that, and you can see where the color green comes out where the utilities are coming in. There will be a clearing there and I could work with, with, with yourself and the township professionals to be able to get around that. You'll see that there's this dotted, or I'll say this, this black line is where the berm is. And we just need to be sensitive to the amount of clearing because there is a, an environmentally sensitive area with a ditch and a buffer. So I, I, I just want to, if we can do it, I would like to say yes. I just want to make sure that I'm not over committing to something between providing that buffer and the limit of disturbance and the buffer that's required to the stream ditch and the wetlands buffer to the north of that. I can't be in violation of that.
Okay.
We'll look at it. Again, it's, we're not opposed to it, but we want to make sure that whatever we do, we stay in compliance with the regulations. We provide, we provide adequate screening either way for that coming through.
That's fair enough. We always like a second way in route, just in case something happens that you can't get into one way. And it would give us immediate access to that three row bank, which we are concerned about. That's it for now. Tommy Miller is on as well and he has the rest of the fire stuff, so. Sorry. That, he has the report for that and I'll comment if we have anything additional. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Garrity. Okay, we'll move back to Mr. Lavallo.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, just to follow with Tom's comments, Keith, on the, on the bottom east side of that lot between the houses, there's an all access road the farmer used to use. What's going to happen with that lot?
I believe you're, you're referring to the easternmost lot, the way you have frontage on Catrel between lot 611 and lot 5, I believe it is.
Yes, yes, correct.
Yeah, we're not intending to do anything. You can see there is a path in there now. And we're providing that buffer and berm to prevent that from doing anything.
Okay, you know, just as a side note, I don't know if this would work, but that might be possible access for the fire department to come around the backside of the berm and around the front.
The only, the only problem I have is something would have to give because there is that berm up and down that in this area is about 15 feet in height or 14 feet in height there. So I, I think our best option to squeeze it would be along that, the north side of that berm. And again, we'll look at that and provide, work with the fire official and the professionals to make sure that what we do there is compliant and provide, you know, the safety aspect that he's looking for.
Yeah, you could also create a gap in the berm if that works too. I mean, I've seen that done plenty of places. Okay, that's a topic for somebody else. The the, in the parking lots where you have the power lines, you have some white lot, white spaces indicated. What is, what surface is that going to be? Is that going to be paved?
Yes.
All right, and, and is that white because of the, you're not putting trucks underneath the lines?
Correct.
All right, is there a possibility to keep that green if it's not being used?
Uh, I could double check and verify that. I'd have to get back to you with that.
The, the FERC requirements for underneath transmission lines, no vegetation higher than three feet.
Correct. Yeah, we have a, they, the JCPN L issued a letter with conditions and their standard operating procedures in terms of everything to go on the site during construction and, you know, permanent. And they, they have seen this plan and have blessed it as shown, but we would be compliant with those conditions.
Okay, just, just, just a comment and then I have one last question. And this is basically a comment to the board. I just want to, I just did some quick numbers and it doesn't affect this application. It's just for the board to, to have at their, at their disposal. We're looking at over 700 acres of clearing, not only the sites, the warehouses, but other sites as well. With the removal of about 68,000 trees is best I can calculate. And that's significant amount of, of trees that are being removed. And it will, it's going to drastically impact the, the environment around here, not only air quality, but noise, lighting and everything. So when me saying that, I wanted to stress to, to the applicant and Mr. Cahill and Keith, if I may, is that landscaping and replacement is, is important as much as we can squeeze in is what I would like to do. And I don't mean squeeze it to the point of being so dense that it looks obnoxious, but to utilize every available space to replant as much as possible. And, and that would require a little bit of thinking, maybe if you, if you had to, a little reconfiguring of certain things, but not to the point of coming back to the board, of course. But just, I just wanted to make that statement important that the reason I would like to push for more trees being planted is because of the amount of removals in the immediate area. And that's not the end of it. There's more coming. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Again, just, just for clarification, Gary.
Yes.
When you say 68,000, you're not talking just specifically the site, you're talking several sites together?
Sure, I'm talking region, Regency, the shopping center. And, and that doesn't include the Kiamnian site. So it's even more than that.
Sure.
Mr. Lavallo, so that with the, the, to just jump on top of that, the parking lot that's going to be removed that we're looking at to the north of the building. Right? So there, do you know what the significance of that now being taken out and being kept would be? I don't know what the size of that is. I mean, obviously that, that assists the, the saving of some of that, that green infrastructure that's there.
Yeah, it looks like it's about half wooded and half open. If I, because this is the first time I'm hearing that it's being removed. Yeah, and absolutely that would help. The trees in that area, there are some significant trees and pockets in that specific area. There are areas of, of trees, I won't call them garbage trees, but they're volunteer trees. Trees that were planted by birds and seed and not very valuable or contribute, that will, that will contribute to the aesthetics of the site. So yes and no to that question. But anything that's left would, would help for sure. Because, because of all that loss, we, I'm trying to do my best to final areas and working with the applicant to get as many trees in as possible.
Yeah. Again, we're, we're gonna, we really appreciate all the comments and, and the feedback from your professionals and you know, we know we have to spend some time with meetings, setting up meetings after this type, these hearings prior to coming back for final to, to work with your professionals to, to bring a great product here back to the board for final approval. So we, we appreciate your comments and we'll work with you.
And also just a final comment, that someone from your office did contact me, which I was glad to hear regarding heritage trees, so thank you for that.
Yep.
That's it for now, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lavallo.
Chairman, I have a comment and before I make my comment, I just want to make a note that Mr. Mimakis has been present since 7:40 and Mr. De Palma has also been present a little before 8:00.
Okay, and, and for the record too, Mr. Mimakis's name, it seems to have changed, his spelling looks a little different.
I will, I will understand.
Yeah, I had to forward him the link, he, he was having trouble getting on, so I forwarded him the link and then he came up, his, the grid around his face has my name on it, so just for the record, so there's no confusion, there is not two D.
There's two D Marucci's.
Fixed.
Okay.
I think all of us know who Steve is, so we're good for now.
He's the better looking of the two, so I wouldn't want to, you know, I wouldn't want to confuse them.
So, Chairman, I just, I heard Fire Chief's comments and I did your Keith's response. When we were working on the redevelopment plan, I had reviewed the fire access and Jake Brown Road. In the 2009 circulation plan, the recommendation was that Jake Brown Road would cut through the property such that there would be and the connection, Jake Brown Road connection would be precisely where the chief is asking it to be, next to the ditch, but because of the environmental constraints, we, we thought it was best and we, meaning Nicole, myself, we had a brainstorming session and we thought it would be best to move it and align it with Cottrell, with that the roadway which is perpendicular to Cottrell Road, I call it Jake Brown Road East Two, where there are few residences, so that we connect it to where there is existing roadway and not have a roadway close to the homes, because right now, although, Keith, if you don't mind, can you put up the site plan so that it's easier for me to explain and zoom in, in that area? Right. Uh, pan it slightly to the bottom. Please? No, yeah, thank you. So, because there are residential homes, these are in residence, this is a residential zone as well, we had thought it would be best to avoid having some sort of roadway very close to the homes. Also, with that proposed, the 2009 proposed roadway, it would have divided this property such that it would be practically impossible to develop or there would be very little developable space left. So the way Jake Brown Road is proposed based on the redevelopment plan was with, with that intent in mind so that we keep it away from residences, we didn't want a connection even between these homes that are, which means block 10254, lot 19.11. We didn't want it to go through and through and that's why a fire access lane was proposed, so for emergency, the fire truck could still traverse along this road and get, and have access on Jake Brown. I would just recommend that between now and the final site plan, the applicant agree to work with us, the township officials, the board consultant and the fire chief to come up with a solution.
We're agreeable.
Thank you. That's all from my side.
Can't hear Dean.
I have no further questions.
Chairman, you're muted.
Dean, you're muted.
I'm sorry. I would, if there are no more from the board professionals, I would open it up now to any board members, questions for Mr. Cahill.
Hey, Marucci, Steve and Max, have a quick question.
Thanks, Steve.
From joining late, can you, Mr. Cahill, can you bring that picture you just had up that Vina had requested to be brought up, the access to Jake Brown Road there?
You want to zoom back in?
Yes, please.
To where we were before? Okay.
Pretty much. So just for some clarity on my part, maybe Councilman De Palmer. So, all of those parking spaces are being eliminated and that's just basically a turnaround?
That is correct and when you say all of them, just for the record, it's the parking stalls that are immediately adjacent to Jake Brown Road, the south right of way. So again, it's the area that's north.
Correct.
Or Loop Road and the building and everything.
All of those spaces are being.
This is all, yep, and we'll only have, we're only going to have Jake Brown Road come out and then be a, a dead end turnaround to go back to Route Nine.
Are the proposed basins going to remain?
No, if there's no, yeah, we would leave the natural vegetation there.
Okay, so everything's going to be eliminated, okay.
And just a quick reason for the turnaround, just so it's on the record?
Well, in, in the event a vehicle did get down there, hypothetically, a, a larger vehicle like a truck got down there, I wouldn't want them to, to back down that whole way. So it would just be enough to, to allow that truck to turn around and go back safely.
I understand it perfectly. I do traverse that Jake Brown Road now from time to time to get across with our township vehicle. It is like the moon back there, you may lose a wheel or something like that or maybe a whole car at one point in time, but my concern is if you can move the turnaround a little bit further up towards nine, the, I guess the, is that the east portion of it?
To the, to the west, yep, okay.
Yeah, maybe another 25, 30 feet, just to, to get it away from those homes. That is a very, very quiet little.
It's not a problem, not a problem.
All right, just, that would be beneficial to that community. Appreciate it, thank you.
As long as it stays away from the trees.
There you go.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, that's it.
I have a question regarding that area also. What, what visuals do those houses see out when the site is developed? Is that the area all in front of their tree or?
Uh, the natural, there's natural vegetation in and along the stream area. That's where, that's where that, the natural vegetation exists today.
And the rest of the field area, is that just barren or are there trees there or?
This is a farm field at this time.
So they'll have, they'll be able to see the parking area?
They could potentially see, if through this farsted area, they could see through that area. It is generally about the same elevation.
So is there a way to embellish that bit more so that it's screened better?
Um, I think we could look at adding some additional evergreens perhaps along our roadway or in that area of the farm field, we do have control of that land.
Okay.
That, that's a great place to plant trees.
All right, good.
It doesn't have to be big trees, it could be seedlings or saplings and fill that whole area in.
Yeah.
Two birds, one stone.
I think we can work with you on that.
Cahill, I have a question. Thank you. The section of Jake Brown Road, furthest east where the residents are, where the cul-de-sac is, right, right by your cursor. You're going to be constructing that?
But if I understood what Vina was saying, I think that's what you were saying, you wanted to pull the roadway further from the residents, I think that's what she was referring to.
Or was that Steve?
No.
But that was over, that was on the, I'll say the west side, the disconnected section. Mr. Lam, you're referring to the eastern part, correct?
Yes, yes, correct.
Yes.
Okay, um, along that section of roadway, are you going to do any drainage improvements?
We'd have to evaluate that in terms of that and, and see where that goes, because what you can see here, if we are removing any and we could balance it, then we wouldn't be increasing impervious coverage. We do have some grades to work with to get down to the stream, that's a distance that would provide, you know, ability for water to park back into the ground and be, I'll say, you know, through a grass vegetated swale to, to cleanse it, so that would have to be looked at in further detail.
Okay, the reason I bring it up is the drainage, especially in the intersection of Jake Brown and Spring Hill, Cottrell, that funny intersection, the township does experience some minor flooding during heavy rain. So if we could improve that drainage, I think all the residents in that area would be extremely happy. So that's something I would really appreciate if you could look at.
We'll, we'll take a look at that.
Thank you. And my next, somewhat more of a comment, the berm behind the houses on Cottrell Road, you know, I really appreciate that, the 12 foot height, I think that's going to be critical for these residents not to be disturbed by this, so with the, the height of the berm plus the trees and the fence, I, you know, I think that's really nice for these residents to limit their exposure to this project.
Thank you.
I just had a question, it may sound stupid, but that you don't ever stack the tandems, do you?
In terms of the tractor trailer, like the, just the, the trailer part, they can stack them for storage.
Okay, because that, we've had an issue before with a totally different site where there were residents involved and we were very concerned about the sight line and whether or not they would be able to see, in that case, it was storage, storage containers, but what we didn't realize is that they put them on some kind of a platform or something that raised them an additional, I don't know how many feet, so that all the calculations we did, you know, didn't fairly work, so I just, I want to make sure that the berm is going to cover.
Yeah, the, and, and our intent for, for, and I, and I, maybe I use the word stacking, but it's, it's at grade, front to back. So there'd be two deep, we're not talking vertically stacking, they would just be like as, almost like a valet parking where they could put two cars and they block one because they control when they move them in and out. We're talking about that scenario, they're not going vertically, they'll be horizontal in a, in a parking lot.
Okay, that's, that's very important, Barbara brings up a very important point.
There would be no stacking of, there would be no stacking, stacking of containers or, or trailers.
Okay, because we as a board, I was on the board at that time and we approved this project and every time I drive past it, I kind of go like this, because we were bamboozled, you know, they gave us a, a maximum of stacking five high, but they really didn't tell us where they were going to start the stacking, you know, and they're stacking them up on top of berms. So the five high, when you drive past, it looks like the Empire State Building, I mean, it's really.
No, no, this is, the intent here is, it would just be the, they would be backed up parked at grade.
Staging more than stacking.
Correct, and I, yeah, I use the word state, stacking, not vertically, sorry.
So, so they will not be on top of.
Back to back at grade.
Okay, so they will not be on top of each other.
Not vertically.
Okay. Thank you for that, Barbara, that was important.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Fritz.
Yes, Ernie.
What's that circular structure at the northeast corner of the building?
Are you talking about here?
No, no, the, that's it, right there.
Yep, so here, we have, we've allocated a location if we need to put a pump house. So for fire suppression, you know, many times we'll have to come back to the board because we said, oh no, we forgot to put a little shed or something. And I know with a, a building this size, if we need to put fire pumps, all of that design, 100% design of the fire suppression system will come later, but this is where we would allocate it because we do have a loop system, as I mentioned, for water to circulate around the building and where we come in, it is the most, I'll say, most efficient location to place for the design of fire suppression, that's why we located it there. If it's not required, there'll be no structure, but you know, I'm, I'm sure you're used to, to hearing about hot boxes and utility boxes that you're like, hey, that was never shown. And what we're trying to do is be upfront and show it that that's where we would locate it and obviously it's much lower than any type of structure relative to our building.
Right, thank you.
For scale purposes, how tall is that?
I mean, a normal pump house is probably in the neighborhood of 15 feet or something max, something like that, but again, we would reserve the rights to just make sure, because there are, when you're bending 10 inch pipes and putting the pumps that are required and all, it takes up a lot of space and sometimes they do stack things there vertically for, for that space, so again, it, it would definitely be below the allowable heights of what's shown on our project or in the zone and it's, as you can notice, a very far distance from the Jake Brown right of way.
Okay.
Chairman, can I make another comment?
Absolutely.
Along the section of Jake Brown Road that would connect to Route Nine, where the parking lot's not going to be installed anymore, could I just ask for no parking signs along that roadway? I could see a truck potentially, you know, leaving your site, maybe, you know, looping around and wanting to stop there, maybe do paperwork or something like that, so we should definitely, yep, right in that stretch all the way down to the cul-de-sac turnaround, definitely post that, no parking, just so law enforcement will be able to enforce that easily.
Or no stopping and standing as well?
Yeah, correct, thank you. No problem.
Very good.
Hey, Marucci, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Sure.
Keith, the structure we were talking about, that's an accessory structure. Accessory structures are not permitted in the front yard, so can we just eliminate that from the, this application and then figure out when we come in front of the board for the final?
So, if you defined it in a location, say for instance in the south side of the building, you'd be okay?
Again, that's a tricky question because, keep moving, keep panning up to the north because that Route Nine is your front yard again.
But if we're behind the, the line of the building?
It's, then you're good, yes, good point, but we can, I, I think there is a solution to it.
Our intent, yeah, our intent would be to, to comply with what you want. I just, I am being selfless as an engineer and knowing where that would be efficient for our design and layout, but we're not trying to create a concern, we'll locate it in a safe location and that will work with our fire suppression design.
Perfect, so I think we can, do you agree to work with us to find an appropriate location that eliminates any variances?
Yes, I do, yes, I do.
Thank you, thank you.
Dean, I just had an addition to what Casey was talking about signage along that roadway, I mean, is there something that we're going to put like at the entrance on Route Nine that it's not a through road?
Shoot, because right now. I believe, I, there is something out there now, I believe, but we will assure that, you know, the, the signage for the access for this location and that it's not a through road will be provided at this location, which, I'm sorry, at, at the, at the jug handle location, so they, minimizing somebody making that mistake.
Yep.
I have, I have one.
I have, I have one question about the berm itself. So I know now looking to put a berm in behind those houses and I agree with, with Casey in that it will help minimize any impact to the, the viewing and the sidelines. But right now, I believe that property line is fairly flat. And now we're gonna be introducing a 11-foot hill, just as we kind of get through and make sure that there's no impact to drainage for these, for these homeowners. Being a resident who lives with a hill behind his house, I understand the trials and tribulations of the wonders that is clay in Old Bridge and how when it runs downhill, it sits. So I just want to make sure that we minimize any impact to these, to these residents today. Because if it does, if we do get a substantial rainfall, they could potentially get quite a bit of water in a yard. I, I don't know what the composition of the soil is there. If it's all clay like it is where I am, but definitely want to make sure that we do look at minimizing it. So we are having a problem with another project where even during construction, a lot of water was being pushed onto our residents' property. And I do not want that to happen here or any other project going forward.
I, I'm confident based on the space that we have in there that we can make sure that they don't have any water going in their backyard. I will, I will say there's a few fences and sheds and a couple other structures on our property, but we will work to, to make sure that we do right by our neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's an important point. You know, the water, even during construction, that, that has to be really well managed and maintained.
Yeah, can I just get a clarification on the berm? Are the, the trees are going to be in front of the berm? On, on the berm?
On the berm.
They're, they're on the berm and you can see it comes across the berm. We're focusing the larger evergreens at the highest point of the berm. In some spots, that top of berm is 30 feet in width, in most spots actually, at the top. So it's, it's substantial. As I mentioned, this isn't just a quick up and down. This is in some areas, that width of berm is in excess of 150 feet. To be exact. Hundred, it's 140 feet in width with more than a 30-foot area of flat spot at the top. So we're gonna focus that to, to gain the, the largest benefit in terms of a vertical separation.
And regarding that drainage, Mr. De Palma, I think what we can do is in general, the, the grade goes from north to south in that area. So with the area that we're gonna pick up, if we, if we slide the that one drive aisle a little bit and shrink it per the Fire Marshal's request, there'll be a little bit of space that's gained there. So we can probably create a swale at the bottom of that berm that'll, that'll basically carry that water along the that property line from north to south.
So from the, the property, residential property lines to the berm, a swell there?
Well, a swell along the bottom of the berm. So what happens is the drainage will go from the residential properties to the berm.
Oh, no, no, that's what I'm saying. So between the, between the berm and the residential line.
Yes, yes, exactly, exactly.
Yep. Rakesh, there's enough, there's actually almost a little bit of that happening already.
Yeah.
On the natural topography. So we'll just, we'll make sure that happens. A good comment.
Yeah, exactly. That, that's probably the best way of handling it.
Yeah, and, and I'll also say as well about that farmland that's there currently, the open space right over Jake Brown, definitely look to plant any type of trees, you know, per Mr. Lavallo was saying, right? The more, the, the more, the better at this point. Since we are losing substantial amount of, of greenage.
If I may follow up with that berm comment, Mr. Chair?
Sure, absolutely, Gary. Go ahead.
The, just, there's, keep the existing row of trees is to remain behind the, those residences?
Yeah, the, the intent there, Gary, just to, is to supplement. We're not trying to clear, I, I kind of pointed out, there's some structures and fences that go beyond, onto our property. And we're, we're trying to not disturb what they're doing or what's there, to be a good neighbor. But at the same token, to achieve some of the heights and the widths that we have, there's a balance there. So again, I think if we use the rule that if we can get the stormwater, any, and again, it'll be minor because it is gonna be, you know, vegetated, it's grassed area. But to your point, we'll make sure we got it covered. So I think we just need to make sure we can move, move that water to the ditches, because there are ditches on both the north and the south end of these berms and just get the water to them following that natural topography. Because I think, Rakesh, if you also notice, right where that prop, where there's that trail that comes in, that between lots 6.11 and Lot 5 is the high point along Cottrell Road. It actually goes down towards, as you go towards the north and then about five feet to get down to that intersection of Cottrell. And then it also goes south. It drops about 10 feet heading the other direction from that point. So we're gonna manage that, Gary. But again, we'll have to look and locate specifically those trees and try to prevent any aspect of it with the grading. Because what we may do is just push the berm some.
Yeah, you would, there's, there's a row of very large oaks that are back there and are very good condition. And and I'm afraid if you put the swell too close to the trees, you're gonna, you're gonna upset the roots. And the problem is with that, if you damage the roots, the tree will have a tendency to fall in the direction of the homes. So we don't want to disturb those roots on that side.
Yeah, and, and you know what, Gary, that comment about pulling the, that drive aisle back will give us a little bit more room to work in there. We got about 60, we're gonna pick up about 65 feet. So I can pull it back, but at the same token, as we all know in a line of sight, I don't want to go, I just want to create just enough space. Leave that line of trees, let the stormwater go, because we'll get the biggest bang for our buck keeping that berm as close as possible to the residents from a visual perspective.
Understood.
Okay, we'll work with you to make it happen. We got a little space there.
Okay, good. Thank you, Gary. Any other questions for Mr. Cahill? Okay, so if we're done with the professionals and the board member questions, we will open Mr. Cahill's testimony to the public. And I must admonish that these questions for Mr. Cahill are directed just to Mr. Cahill regarding his testimony to site work, including Department of Environmental Protection, to lighting, to parking, stormwater management, landscaping, trees, and, and as such. Keep the questions concise. And keep them respectful. So I'd like to, if we see any hands up, Vina?
Yes, we have one raised hand, Nina Jocknowitz.
Dean, I'll keep it pretty concise. Mr. Cahill, can you tell me?
Hang on one second, Ms. Jocknowitz, Mr. Sordillo, do we have to swear in? Or is that, again, that's at the end?
Yeah, that's, again, this is the question.
Very good. Okay, Ms. Jocknowitz, thank you.
Brilliant. Mr. Cahill, I, I just checked with one of the neighbors there, a little bit further up the street closer to Route 34. There's some properties that absolutely have septic in that neighborhood. I'm not sure if they're adjacent to the development. This, by the way, is the least annoying development, I'm the thing. I want to say, you're smiling. I'm happy I got a little smile out of you that one. But I'm wondering if there's, if there's any of the properties that it's adjacent to, and I'm not talking about the Jake Brown properties. I'm talking about the ones on, on Cottrell Road that have septic. And to the point that, that, that Casey Lenning, Lenning's and and, and Councilman De Palma mentioned, I'm most concerned about the flooding and, and what it'll bring. And if, if you were to move that road back that you're gonna get rid of, you know, the, the turnaround road, and you brought everything back, I, I mean, I know I'm saying like 50 feet and I know it takes away from everything else. If you brought that back 50 feet and the burn back and everything else, and then with the drainage, you probably would offset of the possibility, although I don't see any homeowners from that street up on this meeting, which is really funny, isn't it? I keep calling in. But what do you, do you know anything about the septic there? Does anybody, I mean, I know, Dean, I'm asking a question he might not know the answer to. But
I don't know, I don't know the answer to, to the septic question.
Does anybody, I mean, can I ask the question to the general team? Dean?
Can we, can we look into it, Mr. Cahill?
Yeah, I, I can ask your professionals or the, the OB MUA. You know, our site is not gonna be on septic. We're, we're tying in.
No, 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 I, I understand that. I was, it's leading into the same conversation that Katie, Casey had and Eric De Palma had, basically about the flooding. I live in a flood zone, and so I know what it does. When one little development, a change of a driveway could do to mess up your life, believe me. So.
Understood. And, and again, all of our improvements relative to this, we're gonna be complying with the DEPRX for stormwater management.
Yeah, of course.
The ask was to look at on where the existing road is and we'll look at that as well.
Appreciate it, sir. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Jocknowitz. Okay, any other hands up, Vina?
Yes, there is one more raised hand, Alfonso Moore.
Okay, Mr. Moore, okay, you're unmuted. I see that. How are you?
Not too bad. I was just, the prior person was talking. I'm one of the residents on Cottrell. So she was just concerned that nobody was listening. It's on that street. I'm, I'm one of the residents that's gonna be right behind what they're trying to build.
Okay. Do you have a question for?
I was just trying to settle her. I, I guess he answered all the questions. My main thing was about the trees, the berm, the noise, the lighting, but I believe they were answered.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mr. Moore.
We have no raised hands.
No raised hands. Okay, so we will close out the public portion for Mr. Cahill's testimony. And we'll kick it back to Mr. Paul Castro for his next witness.
Call Mr. Sekler, please.
Hello.
Good evening. Mr. Sekler, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but?
Yes, I do.
Would you please state your name and spell your last name for the record?
My name is Matthew Sekler. That is S E C K L E R. I'm with Stormfield Engineering Design. Address is 92 Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Great. And your credentials, very quickly, Mr. Sekler?
I'm a licensed professional engineer and I'm, I am accredited as, as a professional traffic operations engineer, but Institute of Transportation engineers been accepted before this board, over 150 boards in the state of New Jersey as an expert in traffic engineering.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, as part of this project, we did prepare a traffic impact study. Again, I know this may be the third time I'm speaking about a similar project or a similar traffic study in this region. But for those that are joining us just for tonight, I just wanted to give some background. We did perform counts in March of 2021 during the typical morning and evening peak hours. However, we adjusted those counts based on NJ DOT data that was collected before COVID to have an understanding of what traffic volumes are truly like all of Route 9 and Route 516 during your typical morning and evening rush hour periods. That included increasing our volumes by 18% in the morning peak hour and 14% in the evening peak hour. I think what's important in terms of this development, and you've heard our commitment, which would be looking at a holistic approach, a much larger traffic impact study that includes not only all these proposed warehouse developments, but also aspects of the regency and the Oaks development and looking as far down the other signalized intersections south towards the Route 9 interchange with Route 18. But it's important to note on this site specifically, they were looking at a 500,000 square, approximately 500,000 square foot warehouse. The amount of traffic that'll be generated by this warehouse, although it takes up a lot of square footage, is actually less than a typical daycare. So if you were looking at a peak hour of your standard on a primrose or learning experience or any of those type of establishments, they generate more traffic during the rush hour than this warehouse. Obviously, most people don't drive tractor trailers to their daycare establishment. So it's a little different in the type of vehicles. But just in terms of the amount of traffic you'd expect to be utilizing this portion of Jake Brown, again, this is a pretty low on the, on the actual trip scale. But again, I want to, you know, reiterate that obviously, we're, we're gonna be looking at not just the impact of this site, but all the developments up and down this Route 9 corridor as part of that larger traffic study that we've committed to. And obviously, those findings will be working with, you know, the township professionals and making sure they review our work and will hopefully inform some better planning and transportation decisions, whether it requires changes in truck routes, improvements to intersections or things of that nature. So again, from a traffic perspective, this is a pretty low generating use. Our only access to really any substantial public street is from Jake Brown right to Route 9. So that's where all our truck traffic will be headed. Obviously, you heard from Keith, the care that is being taken to separate this from the portion of Jake Brown that intersects Cottrell. So there's no risk of any interaction between this site and the, you know, Cottrell on the back as it relates to the vehicles being generated by the site. And we are providing that, you know, bike and emergency and walking pedestrian connection, which I think all is in compliance with the goals of the circulation plan that the township has. Overall, we do meet the parking requirements. So onsite, you've heard Mr. Cahill's design. It meets the requirements for quantity of parking, the size of the parking spaces, the drive aisles all been designed for that largest tractor trailer, the WB 67, to ensure for efficient access within the site itself. So overall, I could conclude that this project, just like the other two, meet what is typically required for land development projects, especially warehouses such as the one here. And we continue to look forward to working with the townships professionals on that, again, larger traffic study for the Route 9 corridor from Shoemaker all the way down to Route 8, the interchange with Route 18.
Great, thank you, Mr. Sekler.
Okay, Mr. Sekler, that concludes your testimony?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. And opened up the questions from the board professionals, Rakesh or Vina?
Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to Brian Prostka to, to ask questions of that construct.
Okay, so we have Brian? I don't see him.
Hey, good morning or good evening.
Oh, there's Brian. Hi, Brian. Good morning.
Good, good evening, members of the board. So as Mr. Sekler, you know, reiterated and you've seen in previous applications recently, you know, the applicant has, is willing and amenable to providing that larger, more comprehensive traffic study so that we can take a look at some additional improvements or developments that, that may be occurring in this area so we can take a more holistic approach. I guess one clarification for you, Matt, regarding to the use, I think, on the previous applications, general warehouse has been the intent for this site, is that, is there any intent in terms of distribution or fulfillment centers?
No, the same commitment that you heard from the applicant on the earlier application stands here in terms of the style of use. And again, the way this site's been designed, the number of parking spaces somewhat limits the, the ability for this to be one of those, I would say, high employee type warehouses, because there's only so many parking spaces on the site.
Great. And, and also, we, we collectively issued a review letter with Rakesh's office. Updated today. There were a number of comments in there related to circulation and potentially some modifications to look at the Ring Road and, and such internal to the site. I think Mr. Cahill has already mentioned that he's amenable to working with our offices to address those issues. So just for the record, you're agreeable to that, Mr. Sekler?
If Keith is willing, I'm willing to meet with you guys.
Great, I appreciate it. And I think that's, you know, that, that's the extent of it, Mr. Chair at this point. But happy answering questions the board may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prostka. Okay, any questions from our board members for Mr. Sekler or Mr. Prostka?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Schmitz.
Mr. Sekler, are you familiar with the article published April 14th by mycentraljersey.com regarding the NJ DOT study of the Route 935 intersection? Mr. Sekler, are you familiar with the article published April 14th by mycentraljersey.com regarding the NJ DOT study of the Route 935 intersection? While the intersection is located in South Amboy, what effects could be expected along the Route 9 corridor in Old Bridge? And do you know the present status of that project?
I, I personally don't know the article you're referring to. I'd be happy to get a copy of it and review it. I think that, again, whatever that states within there and the DOT potential changes to that area, I think would be really useful within that holistic traffic study that we're looking at for the Route 9 corridor, that'd be working with your township. So I'd be, I would ask for you to provide that to your professionals so I could get a copy of that if that's available.
Well, the article at that time was only calling for public comment-
Okay.
On the intersection.
Okay.
Go along with the study.
And, and I will say that I'll make a commitment that I will reach out to the Department of Transportation, their Public Relations Group, to get any information regarding that project, any comments that were raised, and hopefully speak with their project manager to find out an update on that.
Thank you.
And when was that published, Ernie?
April 14th.
Of 2021?
Yes, mycentraljersey.com.
So it's about eight months ago, okay.
If you, if you Google, if you Google Route 9, Route 35 DOT, it comes up. So that's what you Google. I just found that, I forwarded it to Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good question. Thank you, Mr. Schmitz. Okay, any other board members for Mr. Sekler or Mr. Prosska?
I, I have a question, Dean. So, Mr. Sekler, I know it wasn't part of your traffic study, but prior to this being part of a redevelopment zone, obviously was zoned for quite a number of homes, right? Do you, do you have estimates based off of other studies that you've done what a typical household traffic would be? So I think if I'm not mistaken, Vina, was it 4,000 homes or something along those lines?
No, so it was based on the current zoning, the entire redevelopment area would produce roughly 400 homes with 1,000 additional people and 370 school kids roughly. But what it said is if we're closer to the next round for affordable housing and if the current owner decides to be one of the interveners and he goes through the affordable housing route, then we could potentially end up with 3,000 to 4,000 homes. We've had that in the past. So that was the correlation.
Okay, so, so based off of those numbers, pick any number in between 400 and 4,000. What, what is the, the traffic that would potentially put onto Route 9, Jake Brown Road and, and all of that? Like just estimation in comparison to what you're studying with this truck traffic?
So I'll give you a quick one. And again, this may not be the housing type that would have been picked, but you're looking at your kind of standard fare, multifamily development, you know, maybe parking on the first floor and maybe two or three stories of residential above. About 100 and between 160 and 200 units would generate the same amount of traffic as we are in the peak hour. So then you could extrapolate out of, out to that, you know, beyond that. So around 160 to 200 units of multifamily housing. Again, may not be, you know, single family housing. The chip generation is slightly different. But multifamily housing would be, again, about 160 to 200 units would be equivalent to what we're building here. Single family, it's usually a little bit less. There's a lot more drivers in single family houses. That number would probably be more in the, maybe the 120 single family houses would be equivalent to what we're generating on this site. So that hopefully gives you a scale if you want to then extrapolate that onto 4,000.
But even if you extrapolated up to 400-
Right.
Talking about the potential would have been from a car, and I know cars and trucks are different. So I want to make sure I clarify that. But talking about actual wheels on the ground will be potential, would, would be on the low end double of what the proposal is for this.
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
And there would be a-
Different traffic, but-
Yeah.
At the end of the day, traffic.
Yep. And there would be a significant impact to the schools and, and to all other infrastructure in the town.
Yes, schools, MUA, you know, Casey and, and his department as well and having to maintain all of that stuff, other basins. But I know this, my concern was just the traffic piece.
Yeah, this, this is the least impactful option pretty significantly to anything else.
Yeah.
Chairman Ruji, interesting enough, these properties, again, were privately owned. And we've seen the pattern of the developments that are taking place where the previous owner has basically put in as much as he could from housing and apartments and then has sold it off to different divisions and different companies to build this, not keeping it in his own organization. So it, it can go anyway in those, those particular parcels or even the parcels that are on Route 9 route net right now. And looking at the, the markets as markets change, all those, all those homes turn into apartments, all apartments. And that's one of the previous owners' intent was more apartments. And so from that standpoint and seeing it from the economic realm standpoint, that's where it can go. It, it might have gone that way.
And if it went apartments, there would be significantly more than, you know, hundreds or even a couple of thousand.
Correct. And, and the, the climate today out there in the world is when they're coming in and they want to switch this and, you know, it can be very cumbersome for a township when they're looking to build these massive amount of apartments. And Trudakawa has, has been mentioned as, as well. That's it.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Steve. Okay, anyone else for Mr. Sekler or Mr. Prosska? Okay, then I will close out the comments or the questions from the board members and board professionals, and we will open it up to the public. And again, let's keep the, the questions concise and direct for Mr. Sekler or Mr. Prosska regarding traffic only. Do we see any hands, Vina?
Nina Jacknowitz?
Okay, Ms. Jacknowitz, you have any questions for, direct questions for the traffic experts, Mr. Sekler or Mr. Prosska?
Mr. Sekler actually is probably perfect for this because he's been talking for the last four meetings, if not a million more. And do you ever go home, by the way? But, because it's not even a fake screen behind you. But I feel sorry for you. They've been, they probably don't pay you enough. But anyway, um-
Oh, he's paid enough.
I don't believe it, Mark. He's, he's, he's young, he's sweet, but no. Anyway, Mr. Sekler, really serious, sincerely, I'm just trying to make some light of everything. But all of the four projects, so, so to Mr. McManus's and, and Dean's comment that this, this homeowner could pivot on a dime, it's an I3 zoning. And I think I3 zoning is industrial, although I know there's a high density thing. But of course, again, back to the wetlands and everything else, this developer, this builder, the family, this is five generations. I do know that there wasn't, there was a deal that was made in the 60s not to develop. So, Mr. Sekler, have you added up all the, the, the traffic and safeties for all the places that the combined 3 million square feet? How many cars, I mean trucks? I don't care about the cars. I don't think anybody in this whole meeting and perhaps even the town care about cars right now. Truck traffic numbers for all three, 3 million square feet of, of at the, at the streets and you named them by street by street. I apologize, I'm going to ask you the second question, I apologize. While you didn't mention every single turnaround, you did do traffic studies. Would you please, if you have the ability to right now, go through each of the traffic studies you did, add up all of the, the developments and put them together? So we all hear it because I think it's important for this, this team, the, the, this, the, the, the planning group to hear how many trucks, 67 foot, 55 foot, 53 foot trucks are going to be going through. Could you?
Yes, so the, the approximate number of trucks would be between 75 and 85 trucks in the busiest hour. So again, I think I testified at the, at the last hearing, I did look at how much traffic would be generated by the cumulative number of, of, of the developments of the warehouses. And I think the, the traffic number was around 500, 600. It was about 500, 600 and the truck number was about 75 to 85.
Okay, so, so basically, one hour is going to generate a mile length of trucks, 5,900 square, uh, feet, which is, but how long is a mile, right? So it's a literal mile-
280 feet.
What, 5,000?
280 feet.
Yeah, so it's actually a mile and 700 feet. How's that? But I was just trying to be nice to you. So it's 80, 80 trucks, 67 feet or 60 feet, I think I put in 60 feet, is about a mile of traffic every hour. And that's, that's bumper to bumper, right?
Yes, but luckily, the trucks, if they're traveling 55 miles an hour or so, they could be 55 miles spread out within the roadway network during that hour. Basically, basically, they're not all leaving at the exact same time and not all coming in at the exact same time.
You just said that there's, you're talking about 80 trucks an hour-
Yes.
At the high peak hours. I'm, and so that's one a minute. That's not all spread out.
So what is the, what is the, excuse me, what is the question then?
So I, I just want him to, I want him to clarify for the board here, sir, exactly what you're talking about in traffic. Because you're not talking about 4,000 cars at, at 12 feet long. You're talking about 80 trucks, which take up a mile of, a mile and 600 feet, right? Sorry, Mr. Sekler.
He did answer the question.
I'm sure he answered the question. So is, is there another question?
No. Not for him, not tonight yet.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jacknowitz.
No other raised hand.
No other raised hands? Okay, so we'll close out the public portion for questions regarding traffic and we'll kick it back to Mr. Paul Castro for his next witness.
Yeah, Mr. Nager, please.
Could we get a short break?
Yeah, of course.
Sure, how long do you need?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, not two, not four?
About five.
Being through-
About five, we'll do five. So that will bring us to 9:38.
Thank you.
So we'll take a quick break, we'll see you at 9:38. Okay, it's 9:38, is everybody back on? Vina, we'll give it a minute or two, then we'll do a roll call.
Yes.
Okay, we're, we're beyond our five minutes. So let's do a roll call and see how, see if everybody's back.
Mr. De Palma?
0 for 1.
Mr. Rena?
I'm here.
Here. Mr. De Palma's here.
Mr. Rena?
Here.
Mr. Lowar is absent. Mr. Mimakis? Mr. Mimakis? Ms. Cannon?
He's muted.
Yeah, Barbara's on mute. You're muted, Barbara.
Okay, I'm unmuted, I'm here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lenny?
Here.
Mr. Pink?
Here.
Chairman Marucci?
Here.
Mr. Mimakis?
Ironically, he texted.
One more time, Mr. Mimakis.
I'll text him because he he texted me a time with it. Oh, there he is.
How to get past the cat? Cat wouldn't let me go.
Mr. Snodello.
Here.
Mr. Darji.
Present.
Mr. Kaliokulani.
Here.
Mr. Lovalo. Mr. Miller.
Here.
Miss, Mr. Mr. Prescott.
Here.
Myself, Vina Savin. You can proceed.
Okay, and, uh. Mr. Paul Acosta, who are we moving on to next?
Mr. Nager, please, our architect.
Mr. Nager, would you please raise your right hand? I just need to see you. Okay, um, do you swear or affirm the testimony going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
First name is Sean S E A N, last name is Nager, N A E G E R.
Thank you.
Please state your credentials, please.
Certainly, I have a bachelor's of architecture from Mississippi State University. Graduating in nineteen ninety-seven, I've been practicing architecture for twenty-four years. Uh, I'm a project manager with M and H Architects in St. Louis, Missouri. I've been with them for over fifteen years. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey in good standing. I've been involved with or directly responsible for the design of over five point eight million square feet of this building.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Great, accepted. Thank you.
So you have some you have some brief comments, is that correct?
Yes, they're gonna be very similar to Monday nights. I'll start by saying the building is a companion building to the. Uh, buildings at the Glenwood property and at the Board of Education property. And, um, is very similar to those buildings. It'd be constructed of concrete wall panels painted four colors, a light gray, medium gray, and a dark gray. With small areas of a deep gray and terracotta accents. The wall panels have reveals to separate the paint colors. Paint, the paint is applied in a color blocking technique to help. Break up the uh, the scale of these walls. And that treatment is applied to all four of the elevations. Uh, the dark vertical accents. Are slightly shorter than the adjacent wall panels to provide some visual leaf along the long parapet walls. Uh, the elevations include clear story windows along the dock walls to introduce daylight. To the frequently occupied areas, the interior. The proposed building height is forty-eight feet at the entrance corners. And forty-six forty-six feet, six inches. Uh, at the majority of the building. The entire facility uh, will be protected throughout with an automatic yes, F R. Uh, sprinkler system. The uh, buildings are designed with a. With an office corner and in this particular building, there's an office at the. East end, uh, kind of mid mid portion of the that east wall. Uh, the entry elements are of a larger scale with modern design elements and expansive glass. Uh, the canopy uh, design is bold. It provides deep shadow lines to signify the points of entry. Warm lighter on the face of the panels below the canopy as texture to where people will walk. Use of the accent color on the canopy also uh, accentuates it. And as as I said before, it's a deep orange color. It's not a bright color, more attuned to a terracotta. The uh. Rooftop equipment will be held back. Uh, roughly one bay, about sixty feet from the parapet walls of the building. Effectively allowing the parapet walls to screen the art, uh, the rooftop equipment from view. Of the uh, adjoining right of ways and properties. Uh, the RTU noise is negligible. And will comply with the sound ordinance and laws of New Jersey.
Great, thank you. So we have Mr. Chairman.
Oh, that ends Mr. Nager's testimony?
For this witness.
Okay. Very good. Any, uh. Questions from our professionals?
I have no further questions.
I don't have any questions with applicants architect.
No, I don't either.
Okay, very simple. Uh, so moving on to the board members, any questions? Going once. Twice. Okay, so I'll close out. The questions for. For Mr. Nager, for our uh, board members and professionals, and we will open it up to the public. Uh, and again, just very. Direct questions for. Uh, testimony to the architecture. And Vina, do we have any hands raised?
No, we have no raised hands.
Okay, we'll give it a few seconds and then we'll close it out if nobody raises their hands.
No raised hands.
No raised hands, okay. We'll close out the public portion of the questions for Mr. Mr. Nager. And Mr. Nager, thank you for your testimony.
Certainly.
Sorry, uh, people aren't more interested in what you have to say. I know we are.
It was that good.
Yeah, good, that's our.
Spin it right, yeah. So I would call Ms. Keller, please.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Good to see you all again. Uh, my name is Kate Keller. Last name is K E L L E R. Um.
Is they raise your right hand? Do you swear that the swear or affirm the testimony going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And you've already stated and spelled your name.
Yes.
Quick, with your credentials, please.
Sure, um, my name is Kate Keller. I'm a principal with the firm of Phillips Price Greigle Laney Hughes Planning and Real Estate Consultants. Uh, Seventy Hudson Street, uh, Hoboken, New Jersey. Um, I'm a licensed professional planner in New Jersey and a member of the American Institute of Planner.
Okay, thank you.
You have some remarks you'd like to share with the board and the members of the public?
Yes, um, I'm just gonna briefly, as I, you know, as you've heard before, I'm just gonna briefly go over this application from a planning and zoning perspective and. Per my analysis, how it aligns with the goals of the redevelopment plan as set forth by your township planner and in that. So, um, as you've heard, this is on this is on a property that's in the I three zone within the redevelopment plan area, which is on the. East side of Route Nine, um. And and this is again, this this part of the redevelopment plan is intended to. Uh, take advantage of the access and the connectivity to Route Nine here, um, in a manner that aligns with. Other air of other uses in the in the general region and the general area while also buffering and protecting the area. Uh, the proposed development from neighboring residential uses and protecting the um, environmentally environmentally sensitive lands that are in the vicinity. Um, so I believe that this uh, this project does advance all the goals of the redevelopment plan and that it redevelops an underutilized parcel in a manner that will. Benefit the town through jobs and investment. It's a safe, modern, uh, industrial, commercial. Uh, building with appropriate circulation and access, and it does promote sustainable design by protecting those environmental resources. Um, and as you've also heard tonight, the applicant does comply or will has agreed to comply with all of the applicable requirements set forth. Um, in the redevelopment plan, zoning ordinance, and then as noted in your professional letters and. Uh, the applicant does intend to continue to work with your professionals as they have, um, over the course of the last few months. So overall, this is this is a project in this I three industrial zone of the redevelopment plan that will, um. In my opinion, as a planner, enhance the township's goals for the plan. And that's all I have.
Thank you. That's all we have for this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Keller. Okay, board professionals, any questions from Ms. Keller?
I don't have any questions from Ms. Keller.
I don't either.
I don't have any questions either.
Okay, board members. Okay, very good, and uh, we will now open it up to the the public for any questions regarding Ms. Keller's testimony, and again, just Ms. Keller's testimony. Any hands raised, Vina?
I have no raised hands.
Okay, give it a few seconds and if, uh. You don't see any, we'll close it out.
No raised hands.
Okay, we'll close out the public portion, uh, for Ms. Keller's testimony. And uh, then we'll go back to Mr. Paul Acosta.
That is all we that is all we have this evening, Mr. Chairman. That concludes.
So that concludes your entire testimony?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right now, um.
Mr. Chairman, I think at this point, then we would move on to just a public comment where any member of the public wants to make a comment. This is where they can provide testimony and comments and where they will be sworn in. Um, uh, in connection with this application.
Okay, and we're going to open it up to the public for general comments as uh, as stated by Mr. Sordillo. And uh, I want to make it very clear. That I will not put up with any personal attacks or. You know, and and any going after any of our board members, um. And we will give you a warning. And then you'll be muted, so no personal attacks. Don't go after anybody, just if you have any general comments, we're gonna limit it to five minutes. And please be very respectful and very succinct in your comments. So, uh, Vina, do we have any any raised hands?
Yes, we do. Um, Ms. Jocknowitz.
Okay, Ms. Jocknowitz, any, uh. Comments for the overall.
Ms. Jocknowitz, if I if I may, um, do you swear or affirm that any testimony you're going to give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
So help me God.
Thank you very much. You may, uh, please, uh, spell, uh, state your name and spell your last name just for the record.
Nina Jocknowitz, J O C H N O W I T Z.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Jock.
And for the record.
Five-minute limit. I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, for the record, Dean, there's no personal attacks here. Um, that's.
That wasn't directing that at anybody personally.
No, 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 I just wanted to make sure I I made that statement. That's that's this is all not personal. Um, so the few things I have to ask, so back to the I hate to go back to the whole question about, um. About uh, septic and sewer, but I have a question to be asked of. The developer to consider in the event they do find you do find that there are several homes that have either. A well water still or uh, septic. One of the ways you may be able to alleviate it because the last time I checked, the tie-in is about fifty thirty-five thousand to fifty thousand dollars. Perhaps you could outlay that money so that if they were septic, it would alleviate an immediate problem. By by providing this to the a service to the homeowners that are still. Uh, septic in that that neighborhood, um, so there there they, you know, if there is a situation. They're not gonna need a new septic system because of of uh, the change in. Uh, landscaping, the added uh, water that's going to be uh, percolating into the surrounding areas. That's first. Um. Is that a possibility? I guess I'm asking this to Ephraim. I apologize, Ephraim. For your consideration.
I don't think I'm supposed to comment at this point. I think it's over for that part. I believe it's just public comment. Yeah, we're just gonna comment at this point.
It's just public comments right now.
Just public comments. Well, it's a shame that you guys didn't start with this one because this is perhaps the least. Uh. Conflicting property uh, to develop. Whereas every other one is is gonna be destroying lots of heritage trees. And lots of property where animals are already living. I think it's really disappointing that this was not the first of the of the group. Um, I do think that the other ones you should still reconsider, and I would really appreciate if Mr. Levi, you do know my interest because it's on the record. Would send me a copy of that tree report that you received. Because you said you got it from the developer, right? On the heritage trees. Ms. Dean, can he answer that question?
I'm not certain if he's, uh, yeah, there he is.
Mr. Levi, do you mind?
Okay, um, the. What I what I stated before is that the. Uh, applicants, uh, one of the engineers from Boulder Engineering had contacted me to work on finding the heritage trees.
Okay, can I give you my address right now when you write it down? And then when you get that report. That you send us a copy, is that okay with the the board?
I would ask.
For for record-keeping purposes, how and and you know, how the board usually handles providing these uh, getting documents and providing copies is either they'll post them. Uh, on the website or as part of the application available to the public, or otherwise it can be requested through an Oprah request. Um, it's not, uh, we the board can't start setting a precedent where we just, uh, take down addresses during meetings.
Okay, I so I totally understand that. However, what I'd like you to do. Is because this is potentially this along with all the other three properties is going to be compromising. The uh, the living homes of of animals, some which may be endangered species. I would appreciate if if you put in a a public notification. I guess you're gonna have a meeting. When are you gonna have your next meeting? Do you think the developer will have that to us by then? And then I'll I'll file the Oprah request right now, but it won't be there. I won't know when to put in the Oprah request. That's the problem, Mr. Sardio. I'm I'm mispronouncing your name. I apologize. Joe, do you mind if I clean Joe?
No, I I understand you. I understand, uh, your question and issue, uh, and at this time, you know, we don't know what it is. But what you will know is when the applicant files for its application. Uh, for final approval, if it gets if even if the board approves the preliminary, uh, site plan application this evening. It will be filing in a separate application for final and providing separate notice for final approval. And the conditions that we've been setting forth so far in all these applications, and I'll be setting forth the conditions here, is that the uh. Applicant meets with the 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 board and addresses all these issues, including supplying any supplemental reports. So by the time the, I mean, while I can say at this point, because we don't know when that was gonna be filed, is. By the time they uh, provide notice for the final approval, uh, all such reports should have been submitted to the town at that time.
I, yeah, but so so I I know I don't wanna I don't wanna. To be pedantic about this, but if you get the report, I'm just gonna use the word tomorrow, although obviously not tomorrow. And the next the meeting is the following day, and of course, I'm just using these as like biblical references, seven days, seven months, seven thousand years, whatever. The 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 point is is that we won't know till that meeting. Basically, that the report's in, and by then it'll already be final and you'll be voting on it. So my team of people, the people that are already volunteering to start doing surveying. Will not have a hand on that report. Until your meeting, basically, and then it'll be too late. For us to address to to either identify or address. Any possible complications, animals or other things that may be compromised. By by the by any of the developments, and so what I'm trying to do is offset that. I'm trying to. Boo-hoo you guys to give it to us to so that we can we can do this. Because a lot.
Ms. Jocknowitz, we've 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 exceeded, we far exceeded your five-minute limit.
I I understand, thank you.
Wrap it up and, uh.
I I actually had a little song created for Vina and 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 Barbara. That I tried to play last night, but you weren't around, Vina. Can I play it for you? It's only thirty seconds.
We're not playing any songs, Ms. Jocknowitz. This is.
It's part of the testimony. It's part of the testimony, Dean.
It's it, no, it's not. A song is not part of your testimony.
Actually, well, it's words. I should I guess it's song words, but you know what? You're right. You have a lovely night. Listen, everybody have a happy winter festivus. Thank you very much for answering all the questions. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any, uh, other hands raised, Vina?
Uh, there are no more hands raised.
Okay, we'll give it a few seconds. No hands?
No raised hands.
Okay, we will then close out the public portion, uh, for questions, for all for comments, actually, and, uh. And then we will move on. and then we will move on towards final comments. Okay.
We have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so if we would like to, any final comments from our board professionals or board members?
Chairman Rich Abbot.
Mr. Macus, yes.
So what's been laid out over the course of a couple of meetings is these are positive investments here being made in the township from an economic development standpoint. It brings in clean ratables. From an economic development standpoint, it helps the local businesses here in town. From the gas station to the local entrepreneur. It helps the town stabilize its tax base for long term. It's a long-term benefit for this township for these. And we, we look at towns in the past and towns in the future look for what's called light industry. Light industry's kind of gone by the wayside and been, been replaced by general warehousing. These general warehouses can be anything from, well, I've been all over the state looking at different warehouses, sizes. I've been in New York State looking at warehouses and, and seeing the uses for them. Not that to say these uses will be that, but I've been in one that it was a three hundred and fifteen thousand square foot warehouse. I had two tenants and one of them made full, made the entire sets for ESPN. Some of them stored pods in there for that, for the local residents. But the main thing is developed many jobs. As you went in there, you saw people learning trade jobs and so on. So bringing jobs, the stability to the town from a long-term perspective. Again, going back to these parcels can be used, could have been used for other uses. Could have been large-scale malls, large-scale dealerships, many other different uses. And again, from a housing perspective, many apartments and houses. So I can't stress the positive nature of these warehouses. And again, the investment that's going to be made in the community. Mrs. Keller touched on a couple of those and the jobs for the entire community and long-term stability and ratables for the township. So that's my final comment.
Very well said, Steve. And, and you know, I, I second all of that. I think from a development standpoint, this is probably the most positive thing. You know, positive use for these properties. So. Okay, any more comments from board members?
Yeah, Dean, I just have something. So to piggyback off of what Steve is saying. And I know that, that folks that are listening, folks that are either on the call now or, or go back and listen later on. We, we all understand, I think, on this call throughout the township. We understand that everyone wants to keep that land free of, of everything, right? Folks like to see the open space. That space is, is private property. That property, the property owners, whether it's the new owners, the prior owners, owners before that, have the right to do what they, they want to on their property as long as it's the zoning that it's out there. As we look at a project like this or projects that could have gone on here, you know, as a township and as a, as a board, you know, and all, we need to look at what's best for the township overall. Yes, a warehouse may not be what everyone would like. I'm sure everyone would still like a farmland or open space. But this is, the impact to this will, will be less than hundreds of homes and thousands of homes once they come back, right? We've seen folk things that have been zoned for two, three hundred homes. All of a sudden you have a apartment complex on it. We'll, we see what's happening in Coltsneck and in Lynncroft, where those housing projects go from, yes, you have a four-acre or three-acre zoning requirement, and now they're putting up I know, hundreds of apartments. You know, the, these are things that we have to look at holistically. And even though it may not seem on the, on the surface that it's going to be beneficial to the township, this will be far beneficial to the township than it would if we were to put homes where we're, we're bleeding into the infrastructure of the N U A, of our public works, of our schools and all of that. Hopefully this, you know, as we go forward in a couple of years, and this project is done, along with all the improvements that, that this developer and other developers that, that we work with throughout the township are going to be doing to the town will show the beneficial nature of this project as well as the other things that are going on. You know, Mr. Gersberg has spoken about the golf course that he'll be putting in a thing that's beneficial to the township in addition to other road improvements and other things. And they have been very receptive to all of the, the comments and requests that we have. So it shows that we are working with someone who's not just looking to dump and run. We're looking, it is, it is a developer and a, and a firm that's looking to partner with the township. And that's all.
Yeah, again, very well spoken, Mr. DePalma. Thank you very much. Very well said. And agreed by, by myself as well, and I think most everybody else on the board. I don't want to speak for anybody, but you know, we're all members of this community and we want what's best. You know, the, the developers, the owners, they, they have, as Mr. DePalma said, the legal right to pursue what they want to do as long as they come in front of us. And we are basically that governing body that will make sure the applications meet all zoning and planning requirements. And, and these applications are, you know, variance-free. And they're very simple applications and they meet all criteria. So, and again, you know, I think it's, it's probably the most beneficial application for these areas. Okay, and does anybody else have anything?
Chairman?
Mr. Lanning?
I look at this project, I see positive growth for the township of Old Bridge. We heard testimony tonight about the possibility of thousands of apartments in, in these properties, these parcels of land. And I have nothing against apartments. I don't think anybody does. The one thing that concerns me is the number of vehicles that come with the apartments, the number of students that are going to be attending Old Bridge schools with these apartments that could potentially be there. And when these, if they, if a developer was to go to court and get a verdict, the township has no say in it after that. We have to follow what the judge says. So you look at all these improvements that are going to be performed by this applicant. Roadway improvements, the Jake Brown section that we spoke about tonight, it's going to be paved, it's going to be passable for the fire department, for the police department, for every first responder. Currently, it's in rough shape. It's, it's going to be improved just for those different entities that need it. And it's going to help save lives. It's, it's, it's really valuable. Again, the township would not be able to improve these roadways without a major tax burden on every resident that currently lives here. I look across the street at, you know, White Oak and Jake Brown. Once those roads are developed, a lot of this truck traffic is going to look elsewhere. They're not going to want to be on Route Nine. They're going to cross over to the highway and continue through. So you hear the numbers of trucks that are going to be on the roadway. That will be reduced as this project develops. I think that's a positive. I, I see the cul-de-sac and the drainage improvements that, you know, will happen on Jake Brown Road. That's a benefit to the residents. Right now, you have people driving through at all hours of the night. You know, there's illegal dumping that occurs on Jake Brown Road. You know, the Public Works Department needs to go out there on a regular basis and clean it up. And that's at no fault of anybody. That won't happen anymore. These roads are going to be maintained. They're going to be nice and clean for everybody. I think this is the least impactful project that could go on these parcels, and that's why I support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanning.
Yes, I would just like to say that I would hope that with the jobs that are going to be created with these facilities, that priority would be given to Old Bridge residents so that it truly would be beneficial. Not only as a place to live, but economically, that our residents would benefit directly from it.
Sure.
I also would like to say something.
Yes, Mr. Pink.
I have been voting one way the last couple of votes. And after listening to today, especially listening to Casey the other day, and then of course today from Eric, as well as Casey again, I think I have changed my mind and see that it is better to do this than what I was thinking would benefit the township. This really does work best for the township. It's not my favorite thing, but it does work. And I think we should definitely pass it and go along with it.
Thank you, Mr. Pink.
One last point, Chairman Marucci.
Yes.
As the board, being members of this community living here, it's about quality of life and we do look at the quality of life. And Mr. Gersberg has expressed his concern about quality of life for this township. Many developers that I interact with all across the state. Yes, they, they do talk about it, but Mr. Gersberg is putting his money where his mouth is, let's put it that way. And providing the township with community-oriented golf course and other things. So it's beneficial. And then from a standpoint as community members, as we look at it and we talk and we say, how about that house? What can we do to help that? How can we move that a little bit further away? It's like, it's life quality is what we look at as well. And I guess, and again, the generation and the growth for the township as Mr. Lanning said, Councilman DePalmer, and I believe Mr. Pink just reiterated. It's something good for the community, for a future, for its sustainability and for its ratables. And I'll keep saying that as well. Again, that's my last comment. Thank you, Chairman Marucci.
Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a comment as well. I do have a comment. Certainly from an economic standpoint, I can understand the benefit. When I think about the feasibility and adding what could be hundreds of tractor trailers on the roadway on Route Nine heading in either direction. I see it incomprehensible to think that Route Nine could sustain that type of congestion. To give a fair example, and we talked about some of the developments that will interact to connecting roadways. Five sixteen right now, which is a common roadway for school, we have three or four schools along that roadway. If you take that roadway at seven AM, it'll take you thirty minutes to get from Dunkin' Donuts over to the high school with twenty buses. We're talking this program could have potentially two, three hundred, four hundred tractor trailers. Certainly, they can all emerge onto Route Nine at the same time. But this will have, in my mind, regardless what traffic study is proposed, will have significant traffic impact on Route Nine. Now congestion and traffic impact, in my mind, they tie into potential home buyers. When we talk about home value and warehouse developments adjacent to residential properties, the trend is typically that lowers the rate of your home value. And when you add on congestion relative to the warehousing, I don't know that if the benefits from the economic standpoint outweigh the detriments in terms of potential decreased property values and traffic congestion that Route Nine cannot handle. So for me, I oppose the development.
Thank you, Mr. Renna. And again, that's what makes this board what it is, is that we all come from different professional backgrounds, different experiences, different personal experiences, and, and we take everybody's opinion into account. We, you know, we make very good decisions here. So I, I value everybody's input to, to, to this process across the board. And I thank everybody for their dedication. So are there any, any final comments? Okay, so we'll close out the comments sections from our board professionals and board members. And I would like to ask Mr. Paul Castro if he would like the opportunity to give us a brief summary.
We have nothing further. We appreciate your time and your professionals' time. And we, we thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, then I'm going to pass it off to Mr. Sordillo for a final summary from A to Z before we move it to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A motion to approve would be a motion to approve the preliminary major site plan application, minor subdivision with the requested waivers. That was identified during the testimony. The conditions that would be included would be that the applicant would reasonably work with the township professionals in compliance with all of the, and addressing all of the comments identified in their respective reports that were submitted to the board. In, in, in addition to that, the applicant will be working with the township professionals to render or revise or amend the, the application as necessary to make it fully compliant with all bulk requirements and not require any variances when it comes to final approvals. The applicant did testify and agreed that the landscaping to be included in the berm area, landscaping and fence would be located at the top of the berm and testimony was provided to support that. The, this is kind of covered in the last comment, but specifically the applicant agreed that they would, they would work with township professionals on determining what the final landscaping would be for the berm and the berm area, including addressing the drainage concerns they're in. The applicant agreed to work with the township professionals with regard to determining the correct surfaces for the bike and walkway surface. They will reasonably, excuse me, I just missed that one. They will look to address and potentially revise the pack circulation, the circulation at the rear of the banked parking area for the tractor trailers and attempt to create as much green space as possible. They will work with the township's fire officials to address their concerns specifically with that prior condition to make sure that there is sufficient fire access in that area. They will look into being able to maintain green space in the parking areas under the power lines that are currently identified as no parking but paved, but they will look and see if and how they can create and maintain green space in that area. They agreed to look into moving the cul-de-sac on Jake Brown Road further west away from the residences. They agreed to provide landscaping and, or look into providing additional landscaping and trees, even if it's saplings, working with the township professionals to further screen the residences on the existing cul-de-sac area south or northeast of the site by Jake Brown Road. Is additional in that area, they agreed to look into improving or addressing the drainage in that area to divert the water away from the residences. They agreed that the condition and prior testimony that the stacking of the tractor trailers will only be horizontal and not vertically, meaning in height. They agreed to provide no parking signs along Jake Brown Road. And they agreed to provide signage that Jake Brown Road would not be a through road. They agreed to work with the township professionals with regard to restructure so that, which would not be permitted in the front yard and having some located without requiring a variance. And as testified in the other applications as well, they agreed as a condition that the tenants to be located at the site would not be a fulfillment-type tenant, which would increase the traffic impact of the warehouse uses. And that is all I have. Vina, I don't know if I missed any.
As similar to the other two, the redevelopment agreement would be signed prior to the final site, final site plan approval. And the applicant will enter into a pilot agreement prior to the signing of the final site plans.
Well, actually, yeah, Vina, let me just clarify. I think I clarified it last time and I apologize. It's, it's the redevelopment, the pilot agreement doesn't really affect the board because that's a financial issue, whether, when it enters into the, with the township. But I think it's part of the uh, because that's a financial issue, uh, whether it when it enters into the with the township, and I think as part of the conditions of approval, they have to enter into a redevelopment agreement, because whether a pilot agreement is is warranted or not is a financial determination that has to be made with the township. Uh, it can't, it may be circumstances where it may not qualify as a pilot, but as for the redevelopment agreement, it must be as a, you're correct, I forgot that one, as condition of approval, they must enter to a redevelopment agreement with the township.
Sure, I just brought that, uh, to your attention, because when I was speaking to our township attorney, he had, uh, requested that I, uh, mentioned that that the pilot agreement should be entered as well, so I brought it up.
Well, i- i- I guess we can word it as if if qualifies the the applicant.
Yes, yes. Perfect. I think that's all.
Joe, one one thing, and may maybe I missed it, because I I you did a really thorough job of listing all the stuff. Did did we, uh, mention that the applicant withdrew the banked parking along Jake Brown Road?
Oh, I didn't list that as a condition of approval. It was part of their testimony, but we can listen as a condition that they have, um, that they agreed to remove that portion of the parking on the north side of the site along, uh, Jake Brown Road, and that will do, uh, uh, make all attempts to keep that as green space.
Thank you.
Okay, so that wraps it up. Uh, Mr. Gersberg and Mr. Paul Castro, that meets your satisfaction?
It does, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we're all wrapped up. Thank you. And if there's nothing else, uh, Mr. Lanning?
Yes, um, I might have missed it, and I'm not sure if it would be written down, but the, uh, applicant uh, mentioned to the, uh, fire chief that they would look into a possible, uh, roadway off Cottrell for a fire access.
No, you're you're correct, Mr. Lanning. I apologize. I missed that one, and I I I I'm not sure where I have it in my notes, but I know I wrote it down in my notes. I must have just overlooked it. But yes, that was one of the other, uh, agreements that the applicant made, was that they will look into, uh, locating in a secondary or an, uh, additional emergency access, uh, in the area where the lu- utilities are, um, connecting from, uh, Cottrell Road.
Okay. Anybody else? I think we're all wrapped up. Okay, so if there's nothing else, we'll, uh, move to vote, and, uh, if I could get a motion from someone?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion, uh, moved by Mr. Lanning, and second by Mr. Rena?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, just Dean, real quick, be- before we, um, vote, Mr. Sordillo, I know that's I was, um, indisposed and I was late. Do I have the ability to vote?
Well, I I I will, um, would ask as to, because I didn't, we were in testimony, so I didn't see exactly where you, uh, joined in. Um, but if you, a- and I think this this question actually came up with Miss Cannon at at one of our prior meetings as well. I- it's if you had heard the, uh, the the testimony or or missed any of the testimony, then you, uh, probably should not vote, but if you had joined early enough where you didn't miss any substantial testimony, then you would be eligible and eligible to vote this evening. When you joined, but I I I don't know, I didn't notice, so I I can't really, I leave it to you as to, um, you know, timing wise, if you feel that you missed any substantial testimony that you couldn't be able to vote at this evening.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think I I I know I missed Mr. Gersberg's, um, testimony.
That was very short.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was very short.
Okay.
To be honest, I I believe, um, Mr. Cahill's testimony covered a lot of what Mr. Gersberg had stated testified to and was repeated. I don't think there was anything, at least not in my notes.
Yes, you had joined in, uh, Mr. De Palma joined well before eight o'clock, so I think he heard majority of the testimony and should be able to vote.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
I I just want, I just want to make sure I know, because it did come up with, um, with with, uh, Mrs. Cannon. I just wanted to make sure that we were, that should I, when I vote, that we're doing.
As well as I heard, um, most, uh, Cahill's testimony from the beginning.
Yeah, yeah, Steve joined in a little late, but I I think they joined in right around the same time.
Yeah, I I I feel comfortable to make a recommendation that if, uh, if you had heard, uh, Mr. Cahill's testimony, uh, nothing against Mr. Gersberg, but his, uh, his testimony was reiterated by Mr. Cahill, and I think that you would be eligible to vote this evening.
Okay, excellent. Just wanted to, just wanted to make sure I take your recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so if I'm not mistaken, it was moved by Mr. Lanning and second by Mr. Rena?
Yes.
Okay, and Vina, if we could have roll call?
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Rena?
No.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yeah.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Marty, you're muted.
Yes.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes. Okay, uh, so before I put it to, uh, motion to adjourn, I again, I I may be getting a little old with this, but I want to thank everybody. This is the last meeting of a very long month. And I want to thank everybody for their dedication and and, uh, you know, getting through these these tough meetings, and again, much, much appreciated by all of us.
And Mr. Chairman, I I know I'm always the bearer of bad news at the end of these long meetings. Just provide for a general public comment on anything that might not be on the agenda, uh, that wasn't on the, uh, an application.
Okay.
Vina has already put up the board, so I think we can have already, the clock has started already.
Okay, any final general comments? And again, very succinct comments, uh, no attacking any of our board members.
We have one raised hand. Nina Jaknowitz?
Vina, I think there's a Yeah, I I only want to say that I know somebody's been messaging me like ten times. If you could only hold on for two seconds, I'm trying to get her in. I mean, I I do appreciate, uh, the one met board member voting no. I I know that this has been a long process. I I wish you guys had not pushed four meetings in one month. I think that that did not give, um, oh, she's she, I I ju- let her, let me just get in now. Great. Um, she's trying very hard to get in. Um, but if, um, if you could, uh, look forward, looking forward, it would appreciate it by all the people in the township. I know I keep asking a million questions. I keep getting them instead of other people asking them themselves. If you could spread these meetings out, while I do understand the cost, it's cost prohibitive perhaps to the developers. One item I do want to ask the developers, regardless of when the final approvals for any of this stuff gets completed, to consider the timing at which you're going to start cutting down trees and developing each and every one of the properties. If you start cutting down trees in the early spring, you will be damaging and destroying the homes of young, young babies being born. If you can wait till later August to start any of the 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 tree chopping, at least if nothing else, animals can move elsewhere. I'm sure Mr. Levi can expand upon that, if he if he would, please. However, again, happy holidays to all, whatever holiday you celebrate. Thank you. Have a beautiful night.
Thank you, Ms. Jaknowitz. Okay, any other hands? Vina?
We have no raised hands.
Okay, we'll give it a few seconds, and Mr. Sordillo, my apologies, I I always seem to skip over those final comments, and it's not intentional.
Mr. Chairman, I think you just want me to be the bad guy.
You're good at it.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes, Chairman Marucci.
Wanted to thank you.
She's trying very hard to raise her hand. I don't know why she can't. She's on the phone line. I think she presses star nine. Is that correct, if she calls in? Folks, I know I'm asking the question.
I see a raised hand.
Okay, great.
Chairman, can can I?
Well, we closed the 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 comment section, but we'll allow this this one comment.
Phone number ending in zero three one three?
Hello?
Yes?
Hello, I'm very sorry, I'm very sorry for joining in so late, uh, um, but I didn't want to miss out and felt like I couldn't miss the opportunity to speak, so thank you for your time. I know you've had a long night. But, um, uh, my, I I would also ask that you reconsider really doing this development.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Donna Smith, S M Y T H, and I live at seventy-eight Hilliard Road in Old Bridge.
And do we have to swear her in, Mr. Sordillo?
No, no, this is just general.
Okay, Ms. Smyth, Ms. Smith.
Yeah.
You can proceed. Thank you very much.
Okay, no, thank you guys again for your time. Um, I I'm calling in to please ask you to reconsider the the development, the proposals that you do have before you. Um, I stand in line with everything that Nina has said and 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 offered as reasons for, uh, can reconsidering, actually going forward to it. It's really part of what makes this town beautiful. And I believe there are very, there are the options where we could find places to put certain businesses without destroying all that land, all that wildlife, and the traffic, anybody knows the traffic is brutal on Route nine. Anytime after three o'clock, you're not going anywhere. I don't see how it would be a benefit to this town to add to that already chaotic and dangerous situation. Um, I'm sure you have information about traffic and incidences on that stretch of Route nine, and I I do ask that you, uh, you reconsider or at least give people more time to for you to hear what they have to say, as I wasn't aware of the meeting. That's my own fault, not your fault, but thank you again for your time.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Steve, were you, you were about to say something before?
I was just thanking you for, um, chairing the meetings, so many of them, so long. Um, and all our board members, just for the time that they've taken out of their personal lives here to, um, to do things for the township.
And and thanks to you as well, Steve.
I would, I would suggest that anyone that's concerned with these projects go back in time and review Old Bridge ten two thousand and consider the number of houses that were initially planned for this area and compare with what this development is.
Thanks for that. Okay, Vina, any other hands?
Uh, no raised hands.
Okay, we're going to now officially close it, close the public portion and comments, and we're going to move to adjourn. So do I have a motion?
First, I would like to just say something.
Sure, Mr. Pink.
Wishing everybody a very happy holiday season.
Thank you, you as well.
Happy holidays.
Ditto.
Happy holidays.
Okay, so, so who's going to move, uh, the adjournment?
I'll move it, Dean.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Rena, who's second?
I'll second it, Dean.
By Mr. De Palma.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Rena?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes.
Good night, all.
Okay.